Meeting for Wednesday, June 19th, 2019 to order. We could start with the roll call, please, Tammy.
Brad Waller.
Here.
Jeremy Ratliff.
Here.
John Smith.
Here.
Kristy Stellingworth.
Here.
Maria Bolton.
Here.
Linda Giedlin.
Here.
Knobbs Ashback.
Here.
Paul Prue. Kevin Blake.
Here.
We can all rise and join in on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill &amp; Ray Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Maps respects the role our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working together collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Sample. Next on our agenda would be time allotted for a public comment. I did not see any sheets turned in, Tammy. All right. Then let's move into the next portion of the agenda, which would be recognition. First recognition this evening by the board will be for Daley Thomas for being a state qualifier in the 400-meter dash. I'll give this to Mr. Murray. Congratulations to Daley for representing Merrill High School down at the state meet. Our next recognition from the board this evening is for Russell Detmering for winning the WIAA Division One State Golf Title. Russell is the first state champion for Merrill since Dave Probaskey had the title in 1972. Congratulations, way to go, Russell. Representing Russell here this evening is his father. Quite the experience.
Yes, it was very fun.
And certainly, if you take a quick picture.
Winning is always fun.
Certainly.
Losing is also.
Well-received by the community. Following along online was pretty awesome for us, but to be there, that had to be right in that moment as a dad, that had to be awesome.
It was, I don't know, I don't know how to explain it. I never dreamt how that worked out. I just figured he'd win sometime, but the way he won, I mean, he stomped it down pretty hard.
He put in a lot of hard work and the effort of yourself, the family support, the coaching staff, everybody that's helped along the way. It was just an awesome feeling, so I was trying to, saw that he couldn't make it be a tournament obligation. I was trying to surprise him and have Mr. Probaskey here tonight and have a photo op with the two of them. Both of them had conflicts, so fortunately we're here to receive that, certainly extend our congratulations.
I will, I will, thank you. And thank you, everybody who supported us. All the congratulations, you know, good luck and all that stuff, that means a lot. We were surprised at how much you've seen.
Merrill Productions really put a nice piece together for both Daley and for Russell heading to state. That was really awesome. As he came back to state champ, having our local law enforcement bring him right into the parking lot where a number of family and friends were waiting to receive him and bring him welcoming back to the community, that's awesome.
He had a good supply of Mountain Dew given to him.
He probably needed that next day, probably little sleep coming off of that. So, awesome.
Thank you.
Next recognition this evening is Evan Schmitz, a fourth grader from Jefferson Elementary School. Evan was one of only nine winners in the entire state for the Age in the Classroom Essay Contest. How awesome is that? Congratulations to Evan. We were just talking about Merrill Productions and next we would like to recognize Deb Burnett. She's been involved 18 years of service to the Media Productions Program and Merrill Productions or MP3. The dedication she has shown, something that will be missed by all in that program. Thank you, Deb. Can I share a little bit on Media Productions, leave a little on MP3?
Sure. We actually started as Merrill Productions Channel Three and it was the brainchild of John Gravel and Mayor Kaler way in the beginning. There was one other teacher before me that was there for a year and then I was asked to take over the position, so I learned an awful lot really fast. So, I can put together, you know, those types of racks and I owe that all to this experience and the students and young adults that have been in the program have, they've just been great and without them, we couldn't be where we are today and that's really the goodness accomplishment is that they've actually wanted to stay in it and, you know, work for the community and the school district, so.
Certainly award-winning, to say the least. I mean, all the recognition makes us submit that and see where they have all, under your guidance, competed at a state regional level, so thank you for providing that.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the strategic plan and before we go into any recommended motions, and let's discuss a presentation, make sure that we can see the word behind you. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sample and anyone he has to assist him this evening, talking about our strategic plan and a community conversation.
Sure, if I could have Gary come up. Gary has gladly volunteered as one of the participants for the evening to come up and give his perspective. The first few slides, though, I'll go into, we started off with the MAPS mission and vision and you can see that there and everything that we did strategically and with our planning certainly did tie into what we want to do for students. You can see the timeline there. When we first met, we had the discovery meeting and I'm sorry, we do have, our three Nexus personnel are here with Dave and Claire and Jeff, so they're sitting in the second row. They guided us through this entire process, of which I know most of us were a part of. So, in December, we met with them and we talked about what we want that to look like. Our first meeting was February 27th and we went through a number of activities to identify what does the community want, our school district, not only the final product, but how are we going to get there? The plan was set leading all the way up until tonight, so meeting two was on March 27th and then April 24th was what I thought was a really good meeting. There were a lot of great ideas. We recorded those ideas then and those went into our strategic plan. One thing I can say before Gary gives us his summary of the evenings is that we already had a few of those on our district scorecard. When we talk about student achievement, we talk about community with our people and service and then, of course, fiscal responsibility is already a part of our district scorecard. We try to keep that district scorecard front and center, that's where our survey results go, that's where student achievement results go, that's where next year, we're going to be talking about what we want that student achievement to look like with a multiple data points. But one thing that came out of this that is key to what we do and what we're going to measure moving forward is that we've added a fifth pillar to our district scorecard, which several years ago, we had three pillars, it's grown to four and now it's grown to five and that's going to be, I don't want to spoil the secret, so we'll get to that point. So, Gary, if you just want to give us your perspective on February 27th objectives in the meeting from that night.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. Thank you for inviting me here. My pleasure to share my observations with the group tonight. This is my second go around with the community conversation. I believe the first one was back in 2016, 2017, as you mentioned, and it was for kind of the this year's committee as well. And back on February 27th, we had a wonderful opportunity to talk about the Fab Lab and through the Fab Lab, which was a wonderful experience. It was one of the initiatives that came out of the earlier community conversations and to see it come to life based on the observations three years ago was exciting. So, that was, we should all be very proud and take pride in what was accomplished during that short period of time with the Fab Lab, so that was a cool tool. Dr. Sample then shared his, the state of the district, where we were at, things came out of 2017, where we were at, what we've accomplished and wow, we, as a district, really accomplished a lot out of that 2017 vision. Then we started getting into some small group activities where we were asked to brainstorm with the needs of the community, what we were looking for from our school district. And we broke up into, I think, about five tables of about 10, 12 people per table, there's probably 50, 60 people there, if I'm not mistaken, Tammy, it was quite a great response. And we were guided through an activity for brainstorming on what we would like to see from a visionary standpoint of, from our district. And from that, we then, we came up with all kinds of ideas, many of whom were there. The ideas were endless, but then we were tasked with the challenge to prioritize them and that's where I think we all came together as a community to narrow that list down as best we could for the focus for the next two to three years. Don't want to steal your thunder, but.
You can.
It's.
Yours was field.
It was, you know, to see the results from 2017, coming back, brainstorming some new things, the district, listening to what parents and the community had to say and seeing it happen. So, we're excited to make some proposals tonight on what we see as, we as the community see as the next phase of the strategic vision. So, I'm going to turn it over back to Dr. Sample to finish up some of those observations that we had and recommendations.
Absolutely, and that pretty much highlighted the three evenings. I think that the third evening was capped off with just a free discussion to go back on those points and talk about those things. So, next is the strategic plan. And so, this is page one and it can go front and back as a single-page document, like we said at the beginning, we've got our mission and vision and our core values and then you start talking about some of those things. Student achievement is already on our scorecard, so is fiscal responsibility. Community partnerships is both the people and the service part, but here's the thunder stealer, is student and staff wellness is going to be a fifth pillar on our scorecard. That's the holistic approach and I apologize for this being as small as it is, but I will make sure that everybody has it and I know you've got it electronically to blow up. We're going to start identifying strategies, we're going to start looking at ways to measure our student and staff wellness. Karen Baker's already started that with outside counselors in our, in some of our buildings, but we want to expand that to talk about social, emotional, mental wellbeing, physical wellbeing, that goes with trauma-sensitive schools, that goes with keeping them safe. You can see implementing the Alice curriculum for K-12 students, that's already put in motion to start next year. So, we're going to have a whole pillar full of ways that we're going to measure and then hopefully be able to touch on those two or three times a year for the board on the district scorecard and then bring that back full circle like we're going to do tonight for our district scorecard from this past year. Anything else on this part, Gary, on the strategic plan itself?
Well, I was excited to see the Alice program in there. I know that's something that's near and dear to our hearts. We're at Church Mutual Insurance Company, we're very active with the Alice program, not only at Church Mutual, but for our religious institutions throughout the United States, so we're very active in the Alice program. And so, I'm glad to see that it's brought here just to create the awareness of what we do in case of an active intruder that would take place. I just hope that it never happens, but we all need to be prepared and aware along the ways possible, so. I'm curious to see that up there.
And our staff received their certification, this is the second year now, and now we get to roll it out to our students and that's all the way from Pine River through to high school. The curriculum will be age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate, and so everybody's going to understand. The key part there, too, is not to instill panic, but to instill preparation. We don't want our students to come to school not feeling safe, in fact, just the opposite. We want them to feel comfortable, understand that the teachers are there to keep them safe, building administrators are there to keep them safe and then they know, have an idea of what to do. How students react depends on their age level, but at least they know exactly what would be involved if an incident like that ever occurred, so it's a great feeling for us as well that we're on the certification. Any questions for Gary or myself from the board?
The top one talks about all students will achieve expected annual growth in reading and math as determined by the assessment tool. See the word "all" and I know what's coming up in the rest of the agenda, so how are you going to pull that off?
It's still our goal. It's going to be our goal. We're not going to put it at 100%, but eventually that's where we want to be. It's the same as all students can learn. We truly believe all students can learn and so that's all-inclusive. And, you know, I'm not going to put on there 79% of our students will because our ultimate goal is all.
I guess from a strategic plan concept, so let's find out 79% of the students is what you got. As a strategic plan, then do you allocate all funds, all efforts towards obtaining the other 21%?
Goes back to the academic return on investment, absolutely. And everything has to be funneled for there. The nice thing about community conversation three years ago, the strategic plan this past year just recently and with where we're going with our budgeting principles and priorities, it all melts together. If we're not getting these results as dictated by our community on the strategic plan, we got to do something different, so we've got to start. This is our first and foremost challenge right here and it's our first and foremost priority.
Yeah, I think that's why I bring it up, because just so that we're all on the same page, because my idea of a strategic plan is that you're asking me to adopt it, so then if we get into one year, two year, and three year and we're not meeting our strategic plan, anything that's not on the strategic plan will then be placed at the lowest level of priority until the strategic plan's implemented, because that's kind of the whole point. So, I kind of bring it up and I want to be upfront about it, because in year two, when we want to, you know, put in a new basketball hoop in the parking lot or whatever the deal is, if we don't have enough reading achievement, I'll have to decline it because it's not meeting our strategic objectives and that would be the, basically the rate of priorities for the district.
Correct.
The second question I have is in adopting this strategic plan, we are then officially and formally adopting the GFO Smarter School Budgeting. Is that correct?
That is true. It's in writing.
Right.
And you made a good point, too, John, that final night, as we were throwing around ideas, I think it helped to ground many of us. The ideas totaled, what, about 800,000, 850,000 and that fits well into our budgeting, too. Our pie is only so big, our pie is given to us and we can only take so many slices out of that pie. And so, okay, you want all these things, we don't have an extra $850,000, what are we going to give up? And you just illustrated that example.
And I guess, I mean, I like the whole process and I appreciate your participation and I think a strategic plan is really important thing for any organization to have, but the seriousness of adopting it needs to be understood, that once we adopt this, any and everything that doesn't follow the strategic plan is a nicety. The strategic plan always comes ahead of the other nice things that you may have, so I'm excited because I want all students to meet their expected growth, but I'm also ready to make the commitment to not fund other things if that's what it takes to meet that first priority.
Correct, absolutely. And you'll get tired of seeing this, maybe not. This will be front and center with the board, too, and you'll see later on, I need to be able to measure not only on the district scorecard, but just like we did with community conversation priorities and we were going through those lists, you're going to be able to see. I'm not going to forget about community conversation, that was very important, it got us to where we're at right now with the comp plan, the Fab Lab and other things. We're going to keep that, but I'm going to switch it over and start addressing these four as well as the five pillars on our scorecard, each and every one.
Thank you.
I know we want right into questions and discussion, but there is a recommended motion. Do we have a motion on this particular topic? John?
I'll recommend a motion to approve the strategic plan and incorporate the priority actions into the district scorecard as a means of measuring success.
A second.
Motion by John. Second, I'm going to read it. Do we have any additional questions or discussions on the motion of this topic? Gary, none all goes in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it.
Next, on our agenda this evening is administrative reports. I'll turn it over to Dr. Sample, if you would, take us through, starting with the district scorecard data.
Topic summary gives that same short history on what we talked about before. We used to start, we started with three pillars, then four, now we're going to be moving to a fifth pillar. If you click on the district scorecard, we had lively and lengthy discussion regarding this and we've color-coded, for those of you who haven't seen it and weren't in CTP possibly, the district scorecard is in one of the tabs below and then it's followed by each one of the departments and buildings after that. So, you can see student achievement and this is one year's annual growth. We did not meet our goal for reading and math as a district, that's district cumulative scores tied in there. One of the things that the entire administrative team is passionate about is getting multiple data sources here. One year's growth can be misleading. When you're talking about one year's growth, and I've used this example before, and it's a real-life example, is we've got a fourth grader in the district who's reading at the high school level, 11th grade level, 12th grade level. That student's going to contribute to this being read if that student didn't take their reading score on the MAP test from 11.5 to 12.5 grade, 12 and a half grade. Doesn't make sense for that student. What it does make sense for is a student that's in a fourth grade class reading at the second grade level, they should at least make one year's growth to get to the third grade level. So, in all, in short, we've been working on a goal that now in hindsight, we don't like, we can certainly keep it if the board wishes to do that, because it's my job to report to the board, this is how we're doing, this is what we've been doing month to month, this is what we're doing for the entire year. I know at the CTP committee, we've talked about a data point being below grade level, at grade level, above grade level. That's a very simple data point, we have it at our fingertips. We've talked about, this is where students are achieving within tier one, tier two, tier three, whichever way the board wants to see, we are all ears and that's what we want to provide the board. Something we can all understand, something we can wrap our head around and something that's going to be front and center for the board. At least MAP testing is not going to wait till the end of the year, it's going to be fall, winter, spring, and then as we get a variety of different data points, we're going to gravitate away from spotlight on education and more to the nuts in the polls. Not only with student achievement, but disciplinary referrals, a number of measures that is true data and with data comes a good, bad, and ugly, and you're going to see that with the red, green, and yellow. Excuse me. One thing I do want to point out, after looking at all the red on the district scorecard, if you look at Jefferson, Jefferson did a fantastic job with the current measures that we have and you'll see that they're all green. Outstanding growth, then this is measured by one year's growth, every student making one year's growth. In this case, their goal was, was to go from 78%, let's see, they were taking their goal from 49 to 62% and so they wanted to get to 62% and they actually went to 78% for reading. What that means is that 78% of the students at Jefferson made one year's growth, whether that student was reading at high school level or they're reading two grade levels behind. That's the part that's a little ambiguous, that's why I want to bring below, at, and above grade level data, that's why I want to bring disciplinary referral data, I want to bring as much data as we can so we can understand that. But they did reach their goal. 65% of the math students were projected, or was the goal, and they got to 73% outstanding gains for that one data point. Parent satisfaction survey, their goal was to get to a 3.9, they went above the 4.0 mark at 4.16 and then at increased employee engagement, they went from 3.89, they achieved it 3.90. BVAs is just a little bit different and I do want to explain that, too. If you look at BVAs, they have the same exact survey that we have and we're going to talk with, we're going to talk with Melissa at Studer to see if we can change theirs a little bit. Anyways, with BVAs. BVAs, they did not reach their goal, well, they kind of did. In yellow with their parent survey was, they didn't reach their goal, but it was only by one question. If you take out that one question, that question was, our school building remains clean and friendly. Well, they're working from home and so they thought it was funny, oh, we don't have a school building. So, we will tighten that up a little bit, otherwise you remove that one question, they would reach their goal. Are there any questions? I know there's a lot of information in here, there's every building, every department, district services survey, parent survey, and employee engagement survey, it's a lot to digest at once. The main thing coming out of this is we want your ideas as to what you would like to see as a board for student achievement data, because that's what we're going to measure as we go through next year. That's going to be critical to our funding, it's going to be critical to what we need to focus on.
Mr. Smith?
The, the goals themselves, so I'm looking at Kate's, for example, the goal was from 54 to 70%. Washington was 70% to 72%. Are these just arbitrary increases in that percent to give them something to shoot for? Because the actuals of 62, 62, it seems to me, I mean, was the number, is it, the number just seems like it could be subjective, like last year's number was 54, so this year, we're going to hit 59.
Correct.
Perhaps it's not an attainable growth number.
It's subjective by who owns that building or department. Correct. It's a little bit more arbitrary than, for example, the parent survey, employee engagement, or district services, where you can see the table on the bottom. If you're between a, if you're above a 4.31, you just want to maintain it, so Trish.
Yeah, I invited Trish to.
I can explain some of that.
Sure.
Historically, we've been in our scorecard for four years now.
We're starting there with, yeah.
Yeah, so at first, the red didn't mean anything to me when I didn't meet our goal because it was a stretch goal. I was having our kids, wanting our kids to increase by 10% for so. After going through some of the Studer process, they talked about attainable goals, so our coach talked about a 2% growth is what you should be shooting for and when you're setting your goals, 2% is an attainable goal to shoot for and that's why this year, if you'll look, and if you look past goals, I was extending the goals by eight, 10%. This year, I chose two and we actually did develop and tie steady growth up until this year. But that's the reason behind.
That's the logic.
Yeah, so we go off of last year's scores and then this year, you know, with some coaching, we were able to actively put down the scores that should have gone down.
Yeah, I think that's the problem I had when I read the data is it's putting a goal on a moving target with changing variables, so, I mean, if I wanted, if you wanted to assess, from my logic, I'll, and I mentioned that in the committee level, I like at or below grade level, so that you can see that the students change year by year and then we have the cohort study. we have the cohort study that we keep track of, so that we don't keep changing that percentage. Because, you know, honestly, sixty-two percent might have been a perfectly fine year based on the variables that you had in the building at that point for participation. So, I would like to see more static numbers that are transferable from one year to the next, regardless of class, so that if you came to us and said that in the fifth grade, seventy-five percent of the students are below a fifth grade reading level, I would be able to interpret that as bad. But with this data, if you say nobody met their growth, that actually means they all could be at a sixth grade reading level, and they just stood still for a year. So, I mean, to me, that we have to get to a point where it's not that complex to interpret, you know, if you're a parent, yeah, if you're a parent, you would know, you would wanna know, is my kid at a fifth grade, reading level in the fifth grade? And so, we should probably report the data that way.
And with Tricia, she had, she was at seventy percent the year prior, so she added the two percent. Her actual was sixty-two. The last thing we all agreed that we don't wanna see is next year, now we're gonna set the goal for sixty-four. Knowing where she was the year before then, we can't continue to change that, that target and, and water it down, because we're better than that, and the different data sources.
And we also don't know what the achievement is.
Mm-hmm.
So, at the, with this data, I can't, you can't articulate to me how many kids are beyond or are meeting. You know, there's no, no way for me to interpret. So, I can't get upset about the red, because it really doesn't mean any, doesn't have any value right now, which means we need to change it again.
Thanks, yours.
I know we're gonna do more work. I'm not gonna speak for the chair of the committee for CTP, but I'm thinking we're gonna do more work there, and we're gonna start to finalize this, because we've got a couple more meetings before summer rolls out. I will put the scorecard together with the fifth pillar. We have a meeting, a two-day Studer meeting with retreat, getting the scorecard in order, and that's gonna be mid-August, if I'm not mistaken. And so, then we'll have something that we're gonna start filling in.
We can be able to capture some historical information, so you're gonna change perhaps the scorecard and the dashboard, or however we wanna look at it? Is it possible to build a few years back, so that first year's just not, you know, beginning points, where we can't compare it?
Well, and we've, and we've got those, absolutely. We don't wanna repeat.
Just so we have something to compare it to. Is that a good year, or is that a bad year? We don't know if it's only one year of reporting.
Yeah. And, and more with, with code work, too, is what you're talking about. We wanna see how the first graders going from first through fifth.
Right.
And, and, and classes, and in buildings, and even with department results. But yes, absolutely. And that's what we'll start to focus on with CTP, and we'll add that to the agenda. I just don't want, I don't want the school year to start without that district scorecard being completed. So, we're gonna work hard to make sure that, that the scorecard pillars are in place, and then we start filling in. And we've got time for that. We've still got a couple more meetings to, to do that. In fact, we can even add them to the document itself. And then when we meet with Studer, it'll be fine-tuned a little bit more. And then we're gonna bring it back. The nice thing is, before the fall map testing, if that's gonna be one of our data sources, then, then we have time to, to add and tweak. This is meant to be, to flow. We don't wanna forget something and say, oh, sorry, we gotta wait till next year.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Ryan Martinovich had a report that he presented to us on behavior and disciplines that was color-coded, and it kind of, I think it flowed left or right to left, if I remember right. Is that the same type of disciplinary reporting you want to produce for all locations? Or, and it was very historical, so?
Correct, correct. Something similar to that. I think with, and it depends on what we're gonna define. The, we've got the middle school as a standalone, the only middle school in town, the only high school in town. We're gonna have to come up with something for elementary that everybody can understand, and we can all be on the same page. And that's where we need to make sure that initiatives are pushed out district-wide, that we're all working. While we have a little bit different values, if you're Jaguar, or Gator, whatever, it all really does contribute to the same thing, and that's fewer disciplinary referrals, whatever we're gonna call that. So, yes, absolutely. And we do have a way to capture, and I don't know how many years back yet, but we do have a way to get up to that today as well.
Okay.
And that is the first part of August. So, we're meeting with Studer on August 8. Anything else for districts? Achievement gap reduction, that took the place of Sage. We also refer to that as the AGR report. That topic summary sheet is attached. That has to do with the elementary schools. That was presented the last CTP, and you can pretty much see that, that the method that we've chosen, you got three different ways to go about this with strategies, and our number one strategy was to do instructional coaching. What we didn't wanna do, and we were prepared to do that three years ago, was to move students to create smaller class sizes, and that was gonna disrupt things for about eighteen different families. I know as, like, role just before that day, as director of people's services, that didn't feel right. We'd like the instructional coach, and then moving forward, we're gonna be able to see some good things. I know that, that our buildings are utilizing instructional coaches well, but we can be better, and we're gonna come up with a different plan where we focus a little bit more on content, a little bit more district-wide, and a lot more on our younger grades, K through three, because that's where we get more bang for our buck. So, things were working well at Jefferson with their instructional coach, per the scorecard and per that one measure, but we're gonna be constantly improving the role of instructional coach. And then you can see the rationale down there. You can see the reports with those documents that we are, report out to the state. State wants to know what we're gonna do for AGR. We tell them instructional coaching, and then we complete our reports. Any questions at all in that?
Mr. Smith?
The, um, within this report, this one's a hard one for me to read. I like data. There are a lot of data points. It talks about map testing inside the document here. So, is it, is that tied to the cohort results that we usually see? So, are the spring cohort results available to be added to the ones published in the book?
Spring results are completed, as, as well as the ACT at the high school and middle school. So, yes, we do have that.
When does that normally get then published and added to the graphical representation that we get?
That will be in time for next school year. It'll, it happens over the summer, where we start adding it to the cohort, so we start tracking, yeah.
Okay. So, that means, gotcha. Thank you.
Probably the best answer is when we get CNI in the office.
Okay.
Because I'm getting tired of being HR right now.
All right.
But we, we've all pitched in, and we, and we go where it flows right now, the hiring and then all of that. So, yes, that will be ready to go, and that will be ready to go before the school year. There's another thing, too, that I wanted to mention, that I know that Linda's wanting me to mention as well, is we haven't been able, we do elementary map testing. We do gold at Pine River. Middle school and high school have their own because of their age groups and the grades. We want to get a standard that's gonna actually take cohort, not just through their elementary years, K through five, but we want, we wanna be able to parent the board, and administrator, and teacher to say, hey, here's you in kindergarten with the same measurement, apples to apples, and here's you through 12th grade. And we can do that. ACT Aspire does not lend itself to that. Work Keys is gonna go away as a, as a voluntary, and we volunteered to not do Work Keys. Ninety-six percent of the state said, get rid of Work Keys. But we want that one standard. So, we're gonna be looking at, at a different assessment to be able to give all of our students, which is just as quick and easy as maps. It's gonna possibly replace AIMS Web. We'll bring that to the board in the near future. But it goes, it's designed to go K through 12, and I think that's gonna give us a real strong point, too, to start saying, here's our 12th graders are doing, our fifth graders, and our eighth graders, and it speaks the same language.
The parent satisfaction survey, you can see the results there. In the topic summary itself, I just explained some of the points, some of these we get from Studer. They give us our highs and our lows. These scores are real important to us, because with parent satisfaction survey, which goes without saying, is, is, is surveying our parents. Employee engagement surveys our employees and reflects on not only central office administrators, but building administrators as to the performance and how well we're servicing them. And then the district services survey, which you'll see in a moment, is all of the building administrators surveying the service that central office administrators provide. What we do with all of these surveys is, we look at our results. We take the top three scoring categories, and we say, how can we continue to keep these strong and maybe even make them better, at least maintain them? We take the bottom three as well. And so, like, for the superintendent's office, Tammy and I are gonna sit and say, hey, here's our bottom three. What can we do as a team, as a department? But as a team, to, to make sure that we're improving these, and then that gets reflected onto our scorecard. Mine's a little different, because the superintendent's represented by the overall district scorecard, but I certainly have data points in there that we work on. So, we'll be doing that with each one of them. You can see that the, I highlighted a few for you. You can see the actual survey, too. But the following buildings improved their overall performance, and that was Kate Goodrich, Jefferson, and Merrill High School. Folded means that they, I'm sorry, Kate Jefferson, Maple Grove, Merrill High School, Pine River School for Young Learners, and the middle school all improved their scores, overall performance. The folded buildings indicate surveys higher than they have been in the last four years, since we've started. And that was Kate, Jefferson, and Merrill High School. While still in the range of four, the following buildings experienced a drop, and that was BVA and Washington. And so, when we do get to live together with Studer, it's not only the, the student achievement side that we really focus on, but we're gonna come up with strategies. I know that BVA and Washington, they don't like being there. They wanna include, improve those strategies. One of the strategies, of course, for BVA is to take that environment question out of there, because they're in their home environment. Dale's guys have nothing to do with their homes, keeping them clean. So, that's just one of those things. Are any questions at all? We've got three surveys I know back to back to back. So, anything for the parent survey? Yes, Maria?
We had talked at the CTP committee meeting about getting those free-form comments attached to the employee engagement and parent satisfaction survey.
Yeah.
Just wondering what the status of that is.
I've got a conference call. We have, cabinet has a conference call with Studer on Monday, so I was gonna wait until Monday and chat with her about that.
Okay.
That's all right.
All right. Thank you.
And then I'll bring it back to you.
Sounds good.
Comment. I just wanna congratulate all the administrators, because I think we sit and we hear oftentimes of a lot of negative feedback that comes back from the community. But when I opened up the parent satisfaction scores, they're, they all are much higher. I mean, you have the opportunity to voice your opinion, and the opinions was voiced, and, and they're higher in 0.06 percent. Tricia, we're not gonna worry about that.
Still, right.
Still. Sorry. But no, I think it's a great accomplishment, and it puts some realism to the, sometimes squeaky wheels that are out in, in every type of organization. It's great to see that the parents are happy with the product that's being provided.
Thank you for that. And, and while I pick on Tricia a little bit, I remember she yelled at me, I got after her four times about red. But, her scores are still good, and, and we, we get down to that point where they say, if you're gonna be a 4.31 or above, you just wanna maintain. When you get to that level, and you'll see that with district services, I think with Kesh's, she dropped to 4.2 whatever. Still extremely high on a five-point scale, but we're always, always, always pushing. So, yeah, great point. Thank you. Employee engagement, topic summary, I gave the history there, too, as provided by Studer. We still go through that same process. Buildings and departments showing improvement. This is not just buildings, but the departments' improvements over last year's. Employee engagement for my office, Tach, Jefferson, Kate Goodrich, Maple Grove, Merrill High School, the middle school, and Washington. Those old buildings have the highest score since this survey began five years ago, and that's Maple Grove and Merrill High School. They, they went above and beyond the, the magic number of four, which is fantastic. Buildings in the department showing a decrease in their data from previous years, buildings in Grounds and Pine River School for Young Learners. And then, we're gonna have to do some more tweaking and some more communication, because the buildings and departments that we couldn't have any, because their participation numbers were less than five, is activities and athletics, and they're kinda new to the game, as well as food service. And I know that they will both appreciate having data as well. So, so we're gonna, we're gonna work much harder on the rollout of that survey and increase participation. Any questions at all for employee engagement? And then district services, that's where the building administrators rank us as central office administrators and the service that we provide. Following departments improved their scores from last year, and that's food service, human resources, and special ed. And they're all folded, because those are the highest scores that they've received since the DSS began five years ago. So, great work being done there. And I gave an example that in the final paragraph of what Tammy and I would do with the lowest three, the highest three, and what we're gonna have, we're gonna come up with strategies and, and measurements to, to raise those to the highest three, and then keep the, keep the highest three and maintain that, and bring our lowest three up to something that's satisfactory. Any questions on any of those surveys? Tonight's full of data, a lot of data. But this data's gonna be here. We can always revisit it in committee and at future board meetings. I'm looking forward to the board's voice is now coming forward and tweaking those survey results that we have now, or some of the questions for BVA especially. Pine River School for Young Learners, attached is their monthly report. You see the total for Pine River School enrollment, and maybe 4K, their numbers, 109 and 105 respectively. Any questions for Joe's junior report? I know Linda, you're playing active role in that.
Yeah.
You did play an active role in that. Sorry, I brought up a sore point. Yeah, okay. Put my foot in my mouth before, sorry.
No worries.
But you've had a lot of years of, of good service. The ELL report, or English Language Learners report, is there. You'll see the report from Mark Seaman and Ryan Martinovich, and that summarizes some of those things. Mr. Martinovich is, is not available tonight. He was out of the country. Are there any questions that I can answer with his ELL report? There's a lot of good data. School Forest report, Kevin and myself and Dale attend those meetings. You can see their school forest report. One thing to note, we've got a policy committee scheduled coming up, and one of the things we're gonna put on there, it's been a topic for a couple last, and a couple meetings, is while the animals on school property works for in town, and even Maple Grove, what are we gonna do about school forests with so many neighbors out there? And if somebody's coming in and walking their dog and out for a hike from the backside, how are we gonna handle that? Several different options is no, no animals on the property unless there's an educational value to them. No animals on the property for visitors during, when students are present, seems to be a popular one, too, that we'll discuss. And it could just be no animals, which would be a shame for zero tolerance for animals when you're at this school forest. So, we also have to keep in mind student allergies, and we don't want students to get bit. And so, there's, there's a number of factors to consider, and that will go to policy committees, since facilities committees have been suspended just for a couple months during the summer. So, that'll be at the next policy committee meeting, when we'll talk about that. Title monitoring report from Linda is attached. Title Monitoring Report from Glenda is attached.
This is a requirement from DPI. Anytime you've got title dollars being used, they want to see the accountability. Overall, did quite well. There were a couple of improvements that we could make, and those improvements we will make as we start talking about how we're going to provide service and those things. But I think overall, it was pleased. Wendy Savasky was a former employee here in MAPS, and she's working for DPI, so she got to come home and she was part of the audit team with that. So, I know I had a chance to speak with them just following this report, and they were very pleased with the progress on making retire. Director of Special Ed Services Report, talking about kindergarten transition process, including the kindergarten visitation day. This is how Karen tries to get the best numbers that we can for incoming kindergarteners because, of course, classroom sections and everything are based on that, and we want to make sure that we're ready for them. Postcards get sent out two or three times prior to that first day of school. The sad fact is, we really don't know how many students we're going to have enrolled, especially in kindergarten, until we get to that first day of school, and then it becomes official with that third Friday. So we try to find as many students as we possibly can, putting things in the paper, having the kindergarten visitation day, giving them a head start with the day older themselves, the parent and the kindergarten. And so we try to get our numbers based on that, so we know what sections to plan for for the following year. You can see the food service participation update. I believe that Brian, next month's board meeting is going to give us the year-end wrap-up. But you can see the participation report for the month of May, and that'll be followed with kind of a look at how we did. There's no reason to believe that we're not going to be in the black, it's how much are we going to be in the black, which is always very nice, and it has been for the last several years of not being in the red. Brian's available if you have any questions regarding his monthly status report, or his monthly budget update. Anything on that report that you may have any questions about? Go ahead, yeah.
Brian, in our finance meeting, we had to rush through revisions. Are we acting on any revisions this evening, or can that, so is there a spot? I guess there is a spot on G, isn't there not?
Yeah.
Okay, nevermind, I just wanted to make sure we captured that.
Okay, thank you. Kesh's Technology Report is there, you can see that we've, we had several personnel, the secretaries attended the Skyward Conference. That's extremely important because while Skyward is a wonderful tool, and we were actually their first customer back when they started, they've been very good in Merrill. In fact, we're going to be in the Skyward calendar, I guess, coming up for the 1920 school year. So we submitted some photos. But with any program like this, with this software, it's critical that we understand exactly what the software can do. And so we lean on it. A lot of data is kept in Skyward, and so we had an opportunity to send secretaries there. And it's always a very worthwhile time. You see some before and after pictures of the hard work that the tech team has done. Really great things going on there, and just even with the iPad, I can't say enough about the iPad deployment. While I was on the outside looking in, it went as smooth as it could possibly go. And then also, to mention the FabLab update, you can see some photos there. I appreciate the visuals so that we can understand exactly what she's summarizing there. And then we've got the new Student Online enrollment, that is very slick. Parents are surprised at how easy that is, it's done a world of good. Right now, what we would be experiencing, well, actually in about another week, is parents showing up at a building that's, they can only find some of Dale's guys at, wondering how they can get their children enrolled in school. They call here, we give them the instructions, it's online, and it happens, and so they're there. We're also hoping to have our numbers really solid by then too, knowing how many students are coming to us, especially with kindergarten, but other grades as well. So that's been a great process.
Question, for the Skyward stuff. And I probably could have brought it up at our committee meeting, but it just kind of came to mind. But is there a way to send out some more, like informational instructions for some of that Skyward stuff? Because I've come to find out there's more selections or items that you can utilize, like for school lunches. Specifically at the high school, you can choose, like, certain things that your kid can order. Or I've heard that you can choose things kids can take versus their normal lunch. So, and I'm just going to bring this up, but there's days where mine will spend like $9 on their school lunches a day. But I found out that you can make changes to that. So is there a way to put that out to, I mean, maybe mainly the high school parents that those are options that are out there?
Sure, so we have a family access brochure that we have. We send it out, and some of the tips are simply real-time registration. And it encompasses showing how to check your grade, attendance, something like that. Some of the advanced features come with some of the upgrades, and so I really do rely sometimes on those specific departments that have managed that to help communicate that. But we can definitely make that one, but it's been a long way up there for sure.
Yeah, and maybe, I mean, I'm not an tech savvy, some others either, but you know, maybe some additional. You go here, you click, you're fixed.
Yeah, and it's been good to see with us using the online registration, more and more than ever, you can be on like a sub. So I'm thankful you're asking, that means that you're bringing it.
There are features that I wasn't aware of, so.
Money-saving features too, yeah. Instead of doing all the cards, you're going to be tonight, go get the, over here.
It might be embarrassing, however. There's going to be a cutoff.
That's right.
Thank you.
Your card's declined.
And then finally, for my Superintendent's Report, I had to mention the high school graduation ceremony. It was really good this year. Much shorter, I think, than the year before. And I'm still just amazed, I get a nice perspective of seeing Ellie float as they do pop in certain stands, and I'm like, "How can they do that for that long?" And she looks over her shoulder, and she's smiling, and then towards the end, she's looking over her shoulder like, "Please let that be the last person." Just a fantastic job by the entire high school and everybody associated with that. It's always sad to see the retirees stand up for the final time, but great ceremony and send our kids off. And then MAPS was invited to present at the Studer Conference, that'll be on July 30th, 31st. That's the one that gives us our scorecard, gives us our surveys. And so we're going to talk about culture and climate at that one. And so they're putting together a few things for us, and we're taking a little bit of approval down in Milwaukee. This used to be held in Chicago, and we got down to Chicago. And we're rudely awakened that we were no longer at Merrill when we went to get something to eat. Everything is expensive in Chicago, and so we're very happy that it's in Milwaukee. It's a little bit closer for us, and it's a lot more doable. And so, also, for the Tim Kite, he's going to be coming on Wednesday, August 28th. This is a collaboration between Merrill, MAPS, and Tomahawk School District. The original cost for that was $10,000, and Terry Reynolds said, "Yep, we'll split it with you because we're deeply into Kite and Focus Three and Culture and Climate." And so it was a 50-50 split of $5,000 apiece. Since then, he raised his price to $15,000 because he's getting more into authoring books. And so I still have to have that conversation with Terry right now. It stands as $10,000 for us and $5,000 for them, but I know that our, the verbal, at least that we talked about, a season nine is a 50-50 spread. So, I also wanted, I extended the invite over for Church Mutual to send, they will send a handful, maybe, of people over. And I'm also going to extend the invite out to, obviously, the board. Be great to be there, considering, because we do have the capacity of having Peterson and Windorf drivers there, because they're the first faces our children see when they get on the bus, or to ride the bus, and they're the last ones they see before they get home. And then I'd like to invite some people from the city, and I'll just, I'll start with Dave Johnson and Derek Morgan, and see if they want to come in, because it is really a good thing. They started off in professional sports, now they're in the hospitals, they're in the hall businesses, they're in the school districts. What's good for any group is they're welcome to come and take whatever they loan back to them because it is beneficial. So I'm real excited about that. One of the things that I included there was the podcast that the administrative team has been listening to quite frequently. And so you get a list of all 49 of those podcasts there with that, with the link. I just sent something out to our teachers in the summer to gear up for this. I said, "Here's the link to all the podcasts, please start with Podcast 16, as that is specifically related to education." And so I'll sometimes listen to the podcasts during my morning routine, or while I'm going on a drive longer than an hour. The people will listen to them, you know, just at the greatest times, and so it's been very helpful through the procedure. Any questions at all on my report? You can also see our topics for cabinet meetings.
Go ahead, John. I just want to put it out there for the rest of the board members, and for the record, that the $10,000 that we're paying for this program is a budgeted amount of money that's under professional development. So, when you hear those price tags, sometimes you think, "What are we buying?" But if we didn't spend it on this particular program, it would be spent on another alternative professional development program because when we design the budget to beginning of the year, that's what we allot for professional development, at least from the central office level. And I want to throw it out there because I know there was some confusion floating about the airways at some point in time.
And this is completely district-wide, which, well, technically it's county-wide, but I only care about us, and so it's for the entire district. And thank you, John, for that perspective. We bring in trainers, and they're not great when we bring in trainers. Sometimes it's just the math group, sometimes it's the reading group, sometimes it's elementary. We have a contract with season nine, and so those things do cost money. And I think that this, I know that this is going to be extremely valuable to us, especially knowing that it's going to affect our positive, our culture and climate positively. I really would encourage all of you to come. He's going to give his presentation at Merrill High School in the morning. The administrative teams from Tomahawk and MAPS can meet probably in here with him and have lunch, and then he'll be talking 90 minutes of question and answer, so we actually get dialogue, direct dialogue with Tim Kite. So it's going to be a very valuable day.
When is it?
That's going to be on August 28th. And you guys are welcome to come back here too, for that dialogue. We'll try to get to it in a space where we can all be comfortable.
And there's an invitation signed for that, to the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sample, for all the data and all the updates, some things going on in the district. Next on the agenda would be our committee reports. And the first one that we highlight is the Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee, or CTP. The draft minutes from June 12th were attached. The members of the committee chaired by Maria Volpe are here for any questions. Does anyone have any questions on those attachments? You know, we just covered a lot of those data points just moments ago. So I know there's still some things Maria touched on, and Dr. Sample touched on, that are fluid, and we're working on those, so we're excited to hear more things in the future. So thanks for your work there, everybody. Our next committee is the Finance Human Resources Committee. The attached draft minutes were from the June 5th meeting. Our committee members chaired by John Smith are here available for questions. Anyone have any questions for the Finance HR Committee this evening? Hearing none, we'll review our next committee meeting, the Facilities Committee. We had the draft minutes attached from the June 5th committee meeting. Members of that committee are here in attendance, as well as myself as chair, for any, to field any questions. Do we have any questions for this Facilities Committee this evening? If not, we will move to the next point on the agenda, which is unfinished business. First item there, the only item currently, is the approval of the Reading Recovery Consortium contracts. Attached topic summary sheet was provided from Glenda with a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I move to approve sending the 63.30 Reading Recovery agreements and invoices to the consortium members.
A motion by Maria, do we have a second?
Okay.
Second, by Nubs, any questions or discussion on that motion or this topic? John?
How long is the contract?
It's annual.
Okay. And is that?
Could you come up to the, to the table, please? Glenda, thank you.
So the, the growth and the achievement results that we saw published, this must play a part into that as a Reading Recovery means to me, it's playing a major role. We're not happy with the results. Do you anticipate, this is its, it's year of scrutiny? Considering it's an annual contract, and we have basically now three years to meet our goal, what's your?
So, we are planning to closely monitor our data so that we're making very educated decisions before we just say, "We're not going to do this anymore." Because in some schools, we're seeing things that are working, but in others, not so much. So we're going to be problem-solving throughout the year and looking at possible different things that we can do. But, yeah, I guess in a matter of shorts, if it's not working, then we won't continue.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions while we have Glenda to answer them? Or any other questions on that topic or this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next, we'll go into the Board of Education business. The first item under Board Business is the Merrill Police Department School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding. We've been attached topic summary sheet from Dr. Sample and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend a motion to approve the Merrill Police Department School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding for July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2022.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? It's by Jeremy, any questions or discussion on that motion or this topic? Seeing no hands. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item for Board Business is the approval of the Head Start State Grant Application. The attached topic summary sheet was from Jill Seaman, including the grant application with a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Glenda?
I recommend a motion to approve of 2018, 2019, the State Head Start Grant.
Motion by Glenda, do we have a second?
Second.
By Brett, any questions or discussion on that motion or this topic? Hearing none?
Is it 18, 19?
I was just going to ask Dr. Sample, is that the correct, or is that a grant from the prior year?
It's 1920, so we need to.
Should we amend that motion then to be the 19 and 20? Glenda, are you willing to amend your motion to? We will have that then.
I'm going to make an amendment motion to the Discuss the State Head Start Grant to be approved for the approved 2019, 2020 school year.
Alright, thank you, and we'll have a second on that. Any other questions or discussions? Good clarification, thanks for the amendment. All those in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is the approval of the contract between the Lincoln County Health Department and Pine River School for Young Learners for Health Screening Services. Included was an attached topic summary sheet from Jill Seaman and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
Move to approve the contract between LCHD and Pine River School for Young Learners for Health Screening Services.
Motion by Maria, a second by Jeremy, do we have any questions or discussion on this topic or the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Our next item this evening in Board Business is addition of associate principal positions at Merrill High School and Kate Goodrich Elementary School. There was attached topic summary sheets from Dr. Sample. Was discussed at Finance HR Committee with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Brett?
I recommend a motion to approve the Associate Principal Physician addition at Merrill High School.
Second.
Motion by Brett, a second. By Maria, do we have?
Point of interest, he omitted Kate Goodrich Elementary School from his motion. Sent intentional?
Yes.
This time we have a singular motion, we'll have discussion and we can come back to, to that. So with that clarifying point, I will ask for discussion or questions on the particular motion. Jeremy?
I personally can't support this. I understand the need, I understand the motivation behind this request. I also have to, in that mind, keep in mind public perception, it wasn't too long ago that we made a very clear, a very clear list to the general public, our taxpayers, in terms of the twenty-eighteen referendum of what the referendums were. In that list, there was, there'd no, I remember, there was no context of adding additional administrators. It wasn't too long ago that we had two associate principals at Merrill High School and we eliminated one position. And I want to bring that decision back. And I know they're not, the two aren't tied together, but John K. Sessom looked at it, well, wow, it's awful funny, then now even a year and a half after past referendum, they're adding administrators. I, I do agree that, you know, that something, an alternative could be found to help with workload. I would support, are of the interest of hearing that. But in terms of adding to administrators, and especially with the costs, there's, I can't explain that.
You say adding two administrators, the current motion on the table for your clarification is for one at Merrill High School is the current topic discussion. So we can, we can add to that, but your, your point has been made. Brett, did you have?
My perspective on this is more along the lines of, I just, I don't see a hundred percent yet. I'll give that company, actually. I can see the addition and the, the need for one at the high school. You spend ten minutes in the office hallway and you can see how quickly Shannon and Brad's day gets thrown into a complete loop. You have a fight in the hallway, you have, you name it, they have people in and out of that office constantly with the discipline issue. With truancy court, it's my understanding that there is quite a bit of commitment involved in that on Brad and Shannon's half, behalf. I can see the benefits of adding a position, an associate level there, to alleviate some of that from Shannon's role so that he can go into more of a supervisory position over the entire building in terms of evaluating the staff, looking back and supporting if we have weak spots in certain classrooms. Looking at ACT scores in terms of math or reading or where there's weak points and kind of helping teachers develop and move forward so that way we don't have gaps at that level. From, I guess, to Jeremy's point with Kate Goodrich, I don't have, I don't see the data on what's needed necessarily there for one. I see everything that's been laid out in terms of what's done at Kate Goodrich in terms of time. But in comparison to the rest of the buildings, I don't see anything there. So if, you know, there's something that takes two hundred hours at Kate Goodrich, what does that take at Washington? Is it a hundred hours? That it is twice the workload at Kate Goodrich that we do need more support there? Or is it, you know, a hundred and fifty and there's not that big of a, big of a gap? So if we can look at seeing more of a need compared to the other buildings, that, you know, Kate Goodrich is larger and it does demand more administrative support in comparison to the rest of the elementary schools, I could have that conversation. I just don't see it a hundred percent at that level yet. I see it at the high school and I can see a return on investment for students there. At the elementary level, I just, I don't see the data yet. And if we can, if you want to come back with it, that'd be great, I just don't see it on this one.
And I don't know that many things are going to change in, between now and next time with, with the data that we have. Right now, Brad and Shannon and Principal Kate Goodrich with Glenda are evaluating the same number of staff. And so that, that is where the hours come in, putting that in perspective. So if there were an AP at the high school, now they get split into thirds, roughly fifteen, twelve, fifteen staff per building administrator at the high school. Kate Goodrich is still thirty-nine and with a lot of things going on, poverty is very high there. There's truancy, which would classify as truancy, that is at Kate Goodrich with their size. It's just that the courts choose not to do anything with it. So there's no time spent in truancy court, but there's time spent with the behaviors, with the truancy and with those types of things. In order to stay communicative with parents, I mean, we've got, we've got one person in a very large building with this number of evaluations, teacher evaluations as well, support staff evaluations. That is the same exact that Shannon and Brad do. So those are some of the data points that we talked about. I know we had good discussions at HR Finance about this. We also had good discussions regarding how we're going to deal with our spending. That building needs support. It's supported by, by Oden and to, here's your building, here's your staff size, here's your ratios. Everything points to added support in that building. So it's hard for me to separate the two when they are fairly similar. When we're talking about size and we're talking about the number of evaluations having to be done by everybody and how many hours go into those evaluations to be thoughtful and still guide the instruction. There's a lot of committee levels at every single one of our buildings. And I get that you're comparing Jefferson with Washington with Kate, but the entire administrative team also decided we wouldn't make this recommendation if we thought it wasn't needed at Kate. And maybe it might be needed at Washington or Jefferson, just the sheer numbers of staff alone as well as students and the poverty rate being higher than any other elementary in the building.
And I, I understand that, I guess my perspective, and I'm sorry if I didn't clarify this enough. I don't see that connection to Jefferson and Washington to point it out clear as day. I mean, I see Kate Goodrich Elementary has a special education population that makes up twenty-eight percent of our student body, roughly a hundred and one special education students. Compared to what at Washington, compared to what at Jefferson. This is a definite need over that of the other two buildings. Because in my, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I get the evaluation standpoint, but Merrill High School is its own entity. We have one high school in town, we have three elementary school level, or three elementary schools. So is it Kate Goodrich needs support, but also does Washington and Jefferson need the same, you know, do they need support as well? And we just, Kate Goodrich is bigger, so it's getting in first. I guess I'd like to see that back and forth.
The all team has discussed it, I mean, and it wasn't a need at the all team and that's including Jefferson and Washington's principal. So I mean, that's the best answer I have right now is, is we're bringing the need to the board as, as done by the cabinet and the all team, so.
All right, I've allowed a, a little leeway and I have a couple more hands up here. Certainly our motion is tied to the high school and I want to hear Mr. Smith and then back to Mr. Ratliff and anyone else on the board that wants to say something. But keep in mind, we are focused on the motion at hand, but I have opened up the discussion at this point, so we can continue. And we could ask for a second motion afterwards and see where that leads for additional discussion, but Mr. Smith has to throw now. I, I was, I was clarifying that I have allowed it to expand, but I, I would prefer that we put on the road of Merrill High School and the motion first, yes. And put in that changes.
Motion on the floor is clearly the high school at this point, so the discussion on the floor is the high school. The, for clarification to Jeremy's, did, did you say you agreed that the need? In your, in your observations, just so I understand your perspective?
No, I agree that they have a, you know, an incredibly high workload. Responsibilities are, you know, pretty, let's say, extreme, they're pretty high. But I don't, the way that I don't think that warrants adding additional administrators. My next question to John was going to be, I don't like the first, the very first step is look for, ask for administrators, additional administrators. But what about additional support staff, which would be comparable or cost to the district?
The support man, he still has the floor, so you're, you're, you're being asked a question and you're responding with.
I understand that there's, you know, a high workload, so I know, I know, I don't agree that there's a need for administrators.
Okay. One of the things I've observed, being in the high school, is that the super, the, the principal position is no longer a principal position. We've taken action, this was pre-me, probably four years ago, to remove the dean of students from the org chart over there. And the responsibilities didn't change too much. We still need to discipline children and we still need to execute all the rules and regs. But what, what we took it from is what a principal, at least in my opinion, should be doing on a day-to-day basis and as collaborating with his teaching staff. Making sure that they're implementing the strategic plans of achievement that the, the board has said that needs to get taken care of, you know, through, throughout the course of the year. But we do have the highest paid lunchroom monitor probably in the state of Wisconsin every day. Or bus monitor, if you will. Not that that's a bad thing for collaborate, you know, for, for getting out there and, and getting exposure, but it's actually a necessity. If he's not going to monitor the lunch, he has to find a substitute for the lunch. And so I'm in support of the associate principal position because it, it reestablishes what you would expect to see, you know, inside of a, a school building whereby when the math department collaborates, the, the principal has the opportunity to walk in there and, and talk with them, hear their concerns, just like we have on our jobs where we talk to our supervisors. But if we sat down with our supervisors and we got into the conversation and two minutes later the supervisor excused himself because he has to go address a parking lot issue and that happens every day, it becomes ineffective. So I understand the, the costs at first say, why do we need more administrative staff? But we really can't come to meetings month after month and hold an organization more accountable to achievement and growth, but then not let the commander in chief of the organization have the opportunity and time to meet with his staff rather than meeting with pre-expulsion candidates, out-of-school suspension candidates. So I think by, I think the decision to remove the dean of students was done out of maybe financial necessity, which isn't the case right now. And we've paid the price over the years as far as outcomes go. And so I believe this is the first step to kind of basically get us to where we want to go. Because the bottom line is, is they, the ACT scores are not what they should be and they failed to meet that expectation too. So we have all these new expectations, we got to equip the ability to meet them, and at least that's my perspective.
We're going to go back to Jeremy so he can ask his question of Dr. Sample.
Just, just to clarify, you said that that's not the case now, what did you mean by that? You said financial necessity before, if that's not the case now, what do you mean by that exactly?
Well, when we look at the upcoming budget revisions and we're talking about our enrollment, we're looking at an eight hundred and thirty thousand dollar surplus moving into the next school year. And certainly not that we want to spend all eight hundred thousand dollars on administrative staff, but the money is there to spend on student achievement so that we can get to where we want to go with our, our goals and achievement. And the surplus has a lot to do with the state.
What was that?
He just really ran into that car.
Really did?
He was stuck. He was like, he, he liked to, he went to, around, he went to, it was like, it just.
Called it in. The non-emergency, right in the middle of it. The non-emergency line of Merrill Police Department.
Sorry about your loss. I mean, I think that's, that's the right insurance thing to say, right? Sorry about your loss.
Your point is good, so I'll do it right, I tend to.
No, I guess to summarize my point is there's a lot of energy taking place within the finance area of the school where we're realigning funds to become available specifically towards these student achievement initiatives. And so, yes, three years ago, we couldn't afford such a thing. And we have shown that also what we've accomplished isn't working. We have to start making changes to our current structure in order to get the achievement results. So the money's there.
For now.
For now, absolutely. And the money's there for the next year. And then we go into the same pattern we always go into. And that is, we have no idea what the next biennium looks like when it comes to funding. Now, far as I'm concerned, when we're starting to do these creative things and the administrative staff comes to me in two years and says, I want another referendum, that's your opportunity to say no. So I mean, we have to spend the money, we have to spend the money. That's how state funding works towards schools. And this is a great opportunity to spend the money that we do have to get a better return on our investment. And I'll be right with you in several years that we're not going to always be dipping. We should be realigning this money that we do have to meet our needs.
Frank, it's a, uh, Mr. Dr. Sample, I would agree a hundred percent. And again, my, my challenge to this and my disagreement is, but not by any means disrespect to Dr. Sample or Mr. Murray, or any of the staff. I'm, I'm looking at strictly dollars and cents. I think that's our responsibility as elected officials is to watch the, watch the topic work. And I, I, I don't know for a fact, but I take your judgment, because you're a dollars guy, that we're good for this year, we're good for next year. But twenty twenty-two isn't far down the road. And, you know, like I said, I'm not sure when, not till we accompany the students. So say we add another associate principal at the high school. And then say we go down that black hole again and we just call out and not till things to our taxpayers financially. So then are we going to look at cutting that administrator? Or are we looking at, you know, what sort of options do we have?
I, I hear your concerns and I think very similar thoughts when it comes to adding expenses on top of operations. And if I felt that the Merrill area public school system was providing the educational return on investment that they should be, I wouldn't be in support of this. But when we see all this red under achievement, I mean, we haven't met our goals. And I have read the, all the various charts that compare us to other districts. Tomahawk up the road is smoking us. We have to do something different in order to get the results. Because if our kids don't get the results, what's the point of being open for business? So to me, it's a little bit more of a, we need to invest in the right spots so that we get higher ACT scores, so that we get student achievement. This, this district, as far as I can tell, has been a, like a dying business. The first thing you do is you start cutting the Penn budget and then you don't seal the driveway anymore. And then you cut the phone lines down. And so you can cut your expenses every single year and what you're left with is you're still out of business. And nobody wants to shop there, nobody wants to come to your company. At some point, you have to reinvest and restock your shelves and redo the signage and, and really I think that this is where this district is at, is they need to invest in some leadership and we kind of cut that all out in order to save money, but we got to go the other direction at some point.
And honestly, John, I could jockey back and forth the all evening.
I bet.
To move things along, Dr. Sample, I guess my question to you is, have you evaluated all other options? Are you, are you saying tonight that there is no other option right now? That things are going to crumble at the high school if we don't add associate principal, that we're not to go carry on and maintain the baseline we've been maintaining to, to before tonight?
That's what I'm saying, and, and we don't take these decisions lightly, they're extremely thoughtful, we do a lot of research.
Staff if you wanted to do that. So if you say, well, maybe it'd be more effective to hire a new guidance counselor or an extra teacher. That's fine, but then it doesn't change this. And you're still adding recurring expenses that eventually would have to probably come out of the budget anyway. So I say all that to say that school funding the way it is right now is broken in Wisconsin. It doesn't allow us to address adequately the needs that we're faced with. And so anytime we add new spending to the budget, there is always the likelihood that we're gonna have to pull it out or something else is gonna have to come out either that year to pay for it or in future years to continue paying for it. So this is if, so this is what we'd end up with this year, or I'm sorry, next year, if we added the two elementary, or the two, the $221,000 surplus roughly. Now, it's still early in the year. This is based on, of course, enrollment and based on other things. And so it's a pretty small surplus when you're looking at the overall budget. So we wanna be careful to say that this is a windfall, this is by no means a windfall surplus. I mean, this could be, enrollment could go down 100 students and we don't, we no longer have a surplus next year. So if we added two APs, the following year we'd be looking at a deficit of $538,000. And then it's, again, we're back to anybody's guess for 2022. Now, if the governor signs the JFC plan, this is what we're looking at. And this is with the APs. So we're looking at about a $629,000 surplus. And the following year, a $242,000 additional surplus on top of that. So that's, I think that's where that $800,000 figure that you mentioned is coming into play here. Is over, over two years, it's an $800,000 surplus between the two, between the two years.
Yeah, John mentioned that right.
Okay, alright. So then, let's say FY22, there'll be a $618,000 deficit. But again, keep in mind, that's the first year of a new biennium. So we really, even though we're doing a five-year forecast, you really can only look at the current biennium with any kind of certainty and any kind of surety that you're dealing with actual numbers here. We won't know what FY22 is gonna look like until two years from now. So again, FY23, we're back out to the referendum coming up. So regardless of whether or not, as you can see, there's $3.3 million coming off. So whether you add the two principals or not, is it gonna change the fact that we still have some very significant decisions coming up as to how we're going to deal with potential deficits? And in particular, the, what would happen is the referendum, the recurring, the non-returning referendum that we have now does not get renewed. If that doesn't get renewed, whether you hire two new principals or two new teachers, the additional money that you have over the next two years isn't gonna be there. It's not going to help, I mean, it's a drop in the bucket, the $200,000 for both positions. We're gonna have bigger problems on our hands if that referendum doesn't renew. Now, it doesn't mean also, so let me, let me back up again too. Because what we're, what we're trying to move toward, and John mentioned that with the adoption of the strategic plan, that we were formally adopting the GFOA, smarter spending school, smarter school spending framework. So what we're trying to get at is what does a high-performing school have in terms of resources? And how are they staffed? And what are they spending for people? What are they allocating for different pieces of the puzzle? Probably the biggest challenge that we've had in education over the last four to five years in Wisconsin at least has been the implementation of that educator effectiveness requirement at the state level. There's some things we can do with our current educator effectiveness program where we can pull some of the elements off that would save the 20 minutes here or half hour there. But in reality, and John Smith kind of mentioned this before, our principals right now in all of the buildings are not, a, a, a high-performing school, a principal in a high-performing school is an instructional, they're spending the vast majority of their time in the classroom supporting the instruction that the teacher's doing, giving them feedback, co-teaching, working one-on-one with kids, working one-on-one with teachers. Our principals aren't doing that right now in any of the buildings. So this goes back to a comment that you made about is there, why is there no need at the other two elementaries? Or, you know, what's the, why Kate not the other two elementaries? I would argue that all of the elementary, all of our buildings right now need an additional associate principal. Because right now, our principals are building managers and they are student disciplinarians. They are not spending the time that they need to in curriculum development and instructional improvement. Because they are focused on dealing with student and parental issues and they're, they're focused on the, what I'll call red tape that's been foisted upon. And every single year, there's something new coming down on the state. And so what's happened over the past five years in particular is we've seen a dramatic role, a change in the role of a, of a building principal. And the problems and the struggles that the principals are facing at the high school are the same that they're being faced, that there are principals that the elementary schools are being faced with. They're just different. So our, our elementary principals don't have to go to the truancy court. But at the elementary level, the, the issues and the family issues and the social issues that are, that are, that they're dealing with is, is keeping them out of their classroom, out of their, teachers' classrooms, and is keeping them from the kind of curriculum development and instructional improvement that's gonna move the needle forward on student achievement in this district. Right now, they're spending time tracking down true students. They don't go to truancy court in the elementary level, but there's still issues there. There's still disciplinary issues that we just caution from the elementary schools. They have the same, it's, every, every principal has the same burden across the board. And it's, it's, it's difficult at the, at the high school level. It's difficult at the, and it's just as difficult at each of the elementary schools. And so I believe very strongly that we do need an AP at every, every elementary school. It's just that we can't afford it. And that Kate has the biggest need right now, being the largest of the three elementary. And then finally, overall, we need to move forward. And that's why we're focusing on the smarter school spending framework, using the existing dollars that we have more effectively. You know, an argument could be made, well, why, why an assistant principal and not a social worker or guidance counselor or a school psychologist or extra aides? They're cheaper, they're, you know, maybe they're more effective. We, we, we had that discussion and it's kind of a chicken and egg thing. Where do we start to solve the issue that we're dealing with right now in our schools? And what's the most effective way to do it? Because we can't, we can't afford enough social workers. If we add one social worker for the entire district, it's not gonna make a dent in the issues that we have. If we just hire an extra school psychologist or a school guidance counselor, that's not going to make the dent. What we feel is gonna make the biggest change and make the most impact immediately is the addition of the two assistant principal positions. That then will allow us to deal with some of the issues that we have that are keeping us from developing a overall student bonus plan for both mental health and physical safety. And so it, it really is a chicken and egg type thing. You know, we have to start somewhere and we believe that the EPs are, at this particular point in these two schools, are the place to start. I do believe, and I think Ryan probably won't admit it, but I do believe that the most likely to be an extra EP as well. I've been over there a lot this, this year. I've been out in elementary this year and I'll be over there for 20 minutes, trying to talk to them. I, I think we need extra clerical support in each of the buildings as well. I think we are woefully understaffed. And so, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna struggle financially going forward. But as, as John said, we nickel and dime ourselves and we got to the point in public education right now where we just aren't operating efficiently because we just don't have a staff. The pressure is to cut, cut, cut. And usually the pressure is to cut administration and other support staff. And we end up with principals and teachers that have too much on their plate, too much administrative work on their plate and not enough instructional.
Before I shift to Nubs or we have Brian at the table, I know instead of excusing you, Mr. Smith and I had some questions for you, so we don't go back and forth. But John, I'll come back to you and if you have some additional questions, well, he's at the table. Alright, Jeremy had told me about a prior obligation, so Jeremy's being excused at this time from the meeting. Go ahead, John, you have the floor.
Would it be safe to say, I mean, we have these discussions about closing schools and such. The, this is the point where our economy of scale is way too inefficient to give education to the moral students. We might have built the buildings in 1980 or 60 or whatever. But until we make a decision, a strategic overall plan, we will always be burdened with 4 million, 3 million, 2 million, 4 million because it's just not designed to give education to this district's kids. It's designed from a past scenario and not the present case. I mean, my, my point being is, is if you wanna solve a $3 million deficit, you have to do something majorly drastic. We can't, we can't solve it by cutting teachers or staff because you're talking about 25 to 30 people directly off the, is that a safe assumption? That that's our, that's our point and we get to these points every time and that's where we want a referendum. And the referendum really just asks the public, would you like us to pull the Band-Aid off and redesign your entire district? Or would you like to fund it the way it is for another four years? And then the public goes to the booth and says, we'd like you to leave it alone for four years. We like all the schools just the way they are. But they have to answer that question over and over and over because after the four years, that dollar will always be there. Because it was there before, remember? And so it'll always be there until that's, that's answered. So right now, we're talking about how do we get acceptable ACT scores and acceptable student achievement in 2020? If we're worried about 2023, I mean, it's just, it's, it's an impossible game. You're never gonna catch up to it.
Yeah, yeah, and there, there are other cost drivers in there. You know, you see salary benefits increasing 1.5, 1.4, 2.5, 2.4. And then look at what revenue is doing each of those years. So salary benefits alone increase each year faster than what our enrollment, or what our revenue is increasing. And that's not adding new positions going across. That's, that's casting, casting for our, our brand new positions. And so the question now becomes, well, then why don't we just breathe salary benefits for the next five years? Okay? If we do that and nobody else allows us to, we aren't gonna have teachers working there. So we, you've got a fundamental problem that goes beyond just having two additional new staff members. It's, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a school finance problem that I think both the Republican, that, 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 both conservatives and liberals before, it's always been kind of a liberal issue. Now I think it's becoming bipartisan, bipartisan market mission and the school funding formula in Wisconsin's growth. And I think despite the fact that the JFC plan is only a third of what the governor requested, it's still some of the biggest increases in funding that we've seen in a long time. And that's, that's encouraging. I, I really see that they're finally starting to see that we can't continue the way that we, we have it. Nor can we continue it along the lines that you were getting at, understanding you correctly. We wanna keep operating with the neighborhood elementary school model. We are declining enrollment. If we continue declining enrollment, it, with each passing year, it makes less and less sense for us to operate the number of buildings that we got. Regardless of whether or not we have, even if we had surpluses going all the way, all the next five years, it would still make less sense financially to operate the number of buildings that we're operating right now. We have excess space. That money could be reallocated to social workers, guidance counselors, school psychologists, extra teachers, tutors, after-school programs and things that hit, hit the student. But right now, our money is tied up in extra buildings with extra space. Particularly a year or two from now. We, we can't continue operating the school district the way we are indefinitely for the future and think that we're gonna be able to improve. We, we have to make radical changes. It's just the nature of life, one thing. And two is that the challenges that our kids are facing today are different than they were 30 years ago. Mental health issues are on the rise, they're skyrocketing among the youth. I have my own theories on that. And there's been a lot of theories on that. But we, we have to make some bold decisions and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to come to terms with the fact that we're gonna have to consolidate this in the next two years.
And I think one of my points on the building is, is when we talk about that building area out there, last month in the month of May, on May 20, on May 30th, we spent $210,000 renovating our pool. I don't remember having such a lengthy discussion about our pool renovations. But we won't put two associate principals in the building? You know, it doesn't make any sense to me. The pool is doing, is teaching kids to swim and providing an exercise source for senior citizens and maybe some water play. But I mean, that's a literal, that's a, a real $210,000 cash left our school system to renovate the pool. What, 19 days ago? So I mean, I think that's what, where I struggle is like, we need to reprioritize. But we're gonna always have this little transition game where it's like, we didn't do that yesterday. Yeah, we gotta, we gotta slow the roll when it comes to things that don't increase student achievement. But I just serve that as an example because that's infrastructure costs that are taking away from monies that we could be spending on education. That's already paid, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, back to you on that money.
Yep.
So let me go back to the smarter school spending framework here. If, let's say you do approve the two APs or one. Regardless of whether or not you approve the one for the high school or, or both, what I recommend that you do as part of the motion, and we've, we've already had conversations about this, but part of the smart school spending framework is that new spending, and we're kind of behind the equinox because we haven't really implemented this framework yet. One of the, one of the principles of the framework is that new spending is not approved unless you have a set of criteria by which you're gonna evaluate the program or the staffing over a period of time. And at the end of that period, you decide whether or not the goals of that addition, that new spending, were met. If it wasn't met, you have to evaluate whether or not then was, it's a wrong decision? And you need to eliminate that program and reallocate to something more effective or you need to retool it? So my recommendation is that if you, regardless of what you do tonight, if you approve, even if you purchase a high school, is that you require us to come back to you with a list of the claims that we're making tonight about why we need that. We need it to reduce work time. We need increased time in the classrooms for principals. We need increased engagement. We need to see a, a reduction in the number of disciplinary incidents. We need to, we need to see an increase in student achievement. Whatever, whatever claims are being made for why we want this position, you should require as a board that we come back in a particular period of time, maybe two or three years, and we also report out on a regular basis what the progress is being made toward those buildings. So let's, let's say we want two APs to increase student, principal engagement time to 50% of the time spent in the classroom. So that's our goal. We're gonna evaluate that at the end of three years and we're gonna see how we're doing at the course of it. And at the end of three years, we're only at 35%? Then we need to say that, that strategy didn't work. We need to reallocate those funds to a different strategy. And we need to eliminate those two positions because it's not doing what we thought we said, we believed that it would. Too often what happens in public education is we add a program saying this particular curriculum, this particular program, this particular staff member or position is gonna do this, this, and this, and this. And then we add it and we just never look at it again. And we never reevaluate whether or not that's actually still relevant 20 years later or if it's still actually producing results. The smarter school spending framework is built upon and based upon the idea that we are doing that on a regular basis to all of our programs. We evaluate a program that's been in place 30 years, the AIG department. What are the goals of the AIG department? What do we wanna see out of it? What value are we getting? What's the academic return on investment? If it doesn't exist and we're not seeing that, then we need to reallocate the funds to something more effective, more cost-effective. And that's what we're, we don't do enough in, in public education. And that's what I think needs to be done regardless if we go with one AP or two. And so that would be my recommendation to you as a board, is that you will heartbeat and fire and that you require us to come back before the end of the summer with a, a, a plan for how we're going to evaluate the claims that we're making as to why we need these two positions.
John, do you have any new questions for Mr. Dash?
I just had a couple clarifying points that we've put around the table this evening, Brian. And I know it's not specific to the motion, but it's come out. Referendum dollars and items, I believe per past board and committee discussions are on track, ahead of schedule and even perhaps at a savings in the budget because we've consolidated some, some ideas. Are there any items that would be eliminated that we had promised during either community conversation or referendum? Initiatives that would not happen based on, on this motion or proposal this evening?
So we committed ourselves to the facilities plan with the $1 million borrow.
Correct.
So that money is already earmarked to repay that borrowing back. The projects are already underway and we're well over halfway there to accomplish the goals of projects. We did allocate on a one-time basis about $500,000 or $600,000 of this year's budget. But we did have that extra surplus from last year from reducing those teaching positions at the elementary level. That comes out of next year's budget to help us, that's part of why we have a surplus next year. The Fab Lab is completed, underway, and is proving to be a success. So what we are doing, and, and this is, so, so I believe, in my opinion, that we have accomplished everything we set out to do with the referendum. We had three areas that we, that were prioritized in that referendum. That went up, the facilities maintenance and then attracting new staff. And we've implemented new compensation schedules across the board. Some would disagree that they are retaining, retaining and attracting new staff. But we actually, on the teacher one, we've gotten more positive feedback than have negative feedback on that one. And we actually are seeing some success in recruiting. And we are finding it easier to recruit teachers than we have, have in the past. So I can certainly put something together on a more formal basis to report that out. But I do believe that we have accomplished what we set out to do with that referendum.
Now, with my understanding as a member of the Finance, HR Committee as well, I wanted clarification. It was brought up at the table this evening and had the opportunity for you to clarify. Another bit of information, both currently and in the future, one of the steps taken by the board is a master facilities plan.
Yes.
And I believe we have a date or a deadline assigned, facilities. And the administrat, administrative team has been working with Nexus and anyone we needed to gather this data. Can you refresh my memory or I can ask Dr. Sam Philodale, when will that be back? Because that, that'll be added into different committee and, and board work going forward to help make these decisions. Can you remind us of what the, the due date is on that?
One year, correct.
Yeah, we had, we had some actual information by December of this year. I'm waiting for that next one.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have a lot of information in December. Completion though is approximately one year, not just to air short, maybe one year.
Anyone else have additional questions for Brian? Otherwise, I was going to excuse him and go back to the motion and the discussion and questions there. Just wanted to not send him to the seat and, and back to his chair and the audience and back and forth, so, alright. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Linda, you had the floor and I believe you said that you, you had, you had your questions asked and answered. So I'm gonna turn it over to Nubs next and we'll go from there.
I don't agree with anything, I may disagree with anything that was said. You know, I totally understand, but I have two concerns. I'd like to see those addressed before we approve this. One is the community does not know about this, okay? They're gonna go ballistic. They're gonna think that we railroaded something past them. We've spent the last three, four years with community conversation, with building trust with the community. We're gonna blow that if we approve this tonight. The second thing that, that's just my opinion, okay? The second problem I have is I'd like to see the facilities study, a recommendation, done before we approve this. Because any of those holds three grades goes, okay? They might recommend we pose some buildings. Then we're gonna have some principals, or what do we do with them? They would be perfect for the AP position in my, and we're, you know, we're making use. We're transferring in between the, you know, nobody's being laid off. We've done, you know, I think we're hiring before the buildings is sold. So I'd like to see those two things sold before I can support it.
Can I address one of those?
Go ahead, Dr. Sam.
Well, and, and maybe a little bit of both. Our goal is to be completely transparent. We have an open public board meetings. I mean, nobody has come up to me, nobody's come up to me, but nobody will complain to anybody about, they just spent $200,000 on a reading curriculum. $200,000? That's out in the open, just like this is out in the open. We did hear the strategic planning that our buildings need support, our students need have social emotional needs and those exactly are what we're trying to address right now. So, and the other model is if I can, and I did this for Kevin, I'm more of a visual learner. If you're gonna talk about reconfiguration, and I'm only gonna take this example because it was one of those examples that was gonna be a reality if the referendum failed and I learned better visually. So here you've got Maple Grove, this is not per spec, Washington, Jefferson, Kate. And so we'll deal with, with just those for now because the high school is the high school. And then we've got PRMS. Okay, so you've got Principal Kate, Principal Washington, Principal there. Let's say you go up a principal and an AP there and right now you've got a principal and an AP there. The configuration, if the referendum had failed, looked like this. And PRMS is four through eight. This total seven administrators with an AP at Kate. This total seven administrators, if we reconfigure to this design, and I'm just using that because of the referendum, regardless of how proud and, and hardworking Mark and Ryan are, they already said, you had another grade to the middle school and guess what? We're gonna need the administrative support. So... So to say we've thought of everything, I don't, I'm not going to ever make that claim, but we've thought of a lot of things and this is the plan that fits. It's not a bold move bringing it to the board. I know that the term administrator sometimes raises and ruffles some feathers, but it's my tail that's kind of being held to the line here. I don't like seeing red and we need to do something. If that's not working, guess what? We're going to do something else. But the time has come for now to start addressing things like that, which we will start in a year, and to start addressing the support that our students and our teachers need.
Nubs, anything to add or to clarify on that?
I recommend, you know, we've waited this long. I don't see why we couldn't wait one semester. If we're going to get a report in December, then we can make those, and in the meantime, we can make a known to the public that our plans are through community conversations and whatever so that we're not surprising. That's just my feelings.
All right. Thank you, Nubs. Did I have Brett stand up before? Was everything clarified that you allowed me to call on the next people? Were there any other members of the board with questions or discussion on the motion? John?
Just to clarify, we can't wait one semester because we hire contractor leave in a year pattern. So if we post an AP position mid-year, you're not going to get a great candidate pool. And we're also then making a decision to not offer to the two thousand twenty graduates in this particular class the opportunity to be educated in a building that has an associate principal. We're foregoing all the perceived benefits that we say there is from those four particular classes that will be educated there throughout the next year. The other master facility plan issue would be along the same lines because if we have to wait until the master's facility plan is executed, that could be one year from now, which you just heard. So we're basically, either we move forward so that they can staff it or we're tabling this for a year, which has consequences to the student population. I just wanted to put that into consideration.
Right, Christie?
So has there been any studies done or anything like that with these associate principals that the ACT is going to go up, the student achievement's going to get better? Has it been looked at, studied?
That's what Brian was referring to when he's talking about Ogden and smarter funding and those types of things are looking at high performance schools and supporting them. And he's absolutely right. It's not just an AP at these two, these two are our greatest needs right now, love to have APs available. Also, we would use a court or a second secretary of court role at each one of our rooms. So yes, looking at high performing schools, absolutely additional support. That's not even to mention some of the mental health needs that we have, a social worker, getting our counselor student ratio a little bit more, those types of things. So yes, there's a lot of research out there. That's why I'm excited, John, so we're all excited for some other spending because based on our research, we know what high performance schools are.
And I think we're still talking just to the high school. If it is approved, like Brian said, can we put those checks and balances in there and state that in the motion?
We would want that. It makes it much easier for us. You know, there was, I remember, it wasn't that long ago, let's keep German because that's part of our heritage. Well, okay, we can keep German, but looking at it in the future, are our students benefiting from German? And that's just to say one point. Everything is under scrutiny now because that's the way to state funding, while we look at this, because it's a broken system. It's designed to do exactly what it should do, keep those schools around Madison doing okay, and everybody else is kind of struggling a little bit and wanting to go back there. So people are going to be like, there we go. So yes, everything's under scrutiny and we would want you to put conditions on these two positions.
Thank you, Christie. John?
I'd like to amend the motion on the table on the floor.
Does it need to go to the author of?
I can amend, he can agree.
Then we will have to vote on the, okay.
The motion on the floor is to approve the associate principal positions at the Merrill High School. I'd like to add, conditioned upon the administration provides an academic return on investment plan prior to the beginning of the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year.
A second.
Can we do the vote on the amended, or the amended motion?
Pursue of.
Amendment, correct, okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Henry second by Maria. Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
For the amended or the?
For the amendment.
I'm opposed.
Been a request for a roll call, please, Tammy, on voting on the amendment.
Brad Waller.
Aye.
Jerry Johnson.
Aye.
Kristy Sellinger.
Maria Volpe.
Aye.
Lynn England.
No.
And Kevin Wood.
Aye. Amendment passes on a roll call vote. We then go back to the motion. At this time, all those in favor of the motion, actually, let's roll call that, please, Tammy. So if you could clarify, once you get there, Tammy, if you could read the motion and then we will roll call the motion so everybody understands.
Okay, motion to approve the associate principal position at the Merrill High School, conditioned upon the administration providing an academic return on the investment plan prior to the beginning of the two thousand twenty school year.
Thank you, and we'll have a roll call vote on that, please, Tammy.
Okay, Brad Waller.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kristy Sellinger.
Aye.
Maria Volpe.
Aye.
Lynn England.
Aye.
Karen Ashford.
No.
Kevin Wood.
Aye. Motion carries on this agenda item. Do we have any additional motions? John?
I recommend a motion to approve the associate principal position at Kate Goodrich Elementary School, conditioned upon the administration provides an academic return on investment plan prior to the beginning of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
Motion by Mr. Smith, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Maria. Do we have any questions or discussions on the motion?
I'll have some discussion. Since I motioned it, I'll have some discussion.
Go ahead, John.
I've been at enough meetings to at least feel with a certain level of confidence that three hundred and fifty elementary kids being placed on a property with the one principal in the same manner that we have at our other locations with also then three times the teachers may not fit into this smart academic plan that we're moving forward with. It doesn't, it doesn't add up. And I know we like to make decisions based on compare and contrast and like variables and, but basically what I'm hearing the administration say and all members that I serve on these committees with is that we are deficient across the board. And so if I'm going to take that into advisement and I'm going to take this hunch that it's a very big building with a lot of students and a lot of teachers under one administrator, I'm going to need to make some sort of change if I want to expect any different result. So I don't want Kate to be the same thing as it was. I want it to improve on its achievement and its growth and its culture and its atmosphere and everything that may have led into getting it to that point to begin with. And so the way I look at it is I'm investing into its not only perhaps chances to be, but to meet those goals, but then also some of the reparations. To say that it can be done without an associate principal, it's as big a guess as me saying it needs one. So I'm siding on the air caution.
Okay, thank you, John. Maria, then Linda.
I agree with what John said with regard to the need of an associate principal at In addition to what Brian said, at every elementary school, I think at Kate, we may be putting the cart before the horse because I think as a district, we have to look at the facilities plan first. If we're going to keep everything running over here and hire a principal at Kate and we know we can't continue to keep everything running over here, I don't have the confidence to put a principal at Kate right now without putting an assistant at Jefferson and everywhere else. I've seen the need firsthand at the high school, so I fully support that. I'm not saying that we shouldn't in the future have an assistant at every school. I want the schools to be the very best they can be. I just don't have the data that I need right now for Kate without doing what we need to do over here with facilities first.
Okay.
Because she pretty much said what I was going to say, but better.
All right. Thank you, Linda. Turn the floor over to Brett.
I'd like to kind of piggyback off of what Maria pointed out. I'm not opposed to having support in a building. I'm not opposed to having an associate principal in Kate Goodrich. I just don't necessarily have a hundred percent confidence that that's the move to make strictly at that building right this second rather than if we can make a move at both other elementary schools that also have the need for it. But show me the need, show me that. I see the need somewhat at Kate that there's maybe this insert examples that were laid out for us, but in comparison to what? I'm comparing that to nothing. I'm just comparing that to that building and understanding that there is some similarities in staffing sizes in relation to the high school. But I would like to see the other elementary schools also supported in that as well. I don't know if it's necessarily, we can't afford it at this moment. Is there a different creative way that the administration can come up with to make a position that can support all buildings at that level? I'm not, I don't want to put ideas and I'm not here to come up with ideas and just.
We've gone about that. Relationships matter. Put an elementary in the students at all three buildings to go around and act as the PO. That's really what it'd be. There's no relationship with those students if we value our relationships. I just don't want to set Kate Goodrich up with goals that are just going to be extremely minimal for another year. It's not fair to those incoming kindergartners or the soon to be fifth graders that we say, here's what we recognize as a need, we can address the need, so we're going to set our goals low or leave that part of the student achievement blank for this year until we wait and see what happens with the facilities plan. Puts me in a tough spot, puts the administrative team in a tough spot. So I don't know what else to do except to say, you know, do our best, don't be too disappointed because we came to you guys with a legitimate need and it appears it might not be met, so, you know, and I can't come up with a creative position that's going to evaluate staff with the data that we have and the hours that we have and everything that has to go into staff evaluation. If that person is called an administrator, there's no, I can call it something else, but it has an admin cert with it, so.
Please correct me if I'm wrong because I'm going strictly off memory on this. I believe last year we saw great numbers come out of Kate in terms of their scorecard, right? We improved, it was improvement, it wasn't?
We had improvement over the year before, but now what you're seeing on the scorecard is taking those last year numbers.
Right.
And improving on that.
Yep, and we, it's, I mean, slipped a little bit, but also, I mean, it's nothing horrendous, but it's not, I guess, as good as it could be. It wasn't meeting the ambigual that kind of John had laid out. So how has this need transpired just to now? I mean, we've had, this building's been around for twenty-one years. Was the need there last year as well and we just didn't hear about it until now? Or was?
We've been working on this all year as to looking at everything, what can we possibly do to get ready for next year to start turning some things green, to bring to the board results from that building? So yes, we've had conversations, if you look back at Academy, we've had conversations about AP at Kate for a while. Administrative leadership team can, and like I say, we don't take these things lightly. It's an extremely thoughtful decision. If all of us are on the line to produce results and we've got this in the budget because we carved this out of the pie and said, here, we can do away with a few little things even though we're not fully versed in smarter budgeting. We carved it out of the pie, we have the money to move forward. JFC is looking extremely promising. Here's where we're at. I'm not sure why we wouldn't do that. And that's, the all team includes the Washington and Jefferson and Maple Grove principals. So yeah, this is a very well thought out plan. Talk about the future, it's not something that's going to go away in the future either. It's always been a concern, you close a building, what are we going to do with those teachers? They're out of work. They're not because attrition every single year assures that if you want to be here, you're going to be here and if you're effective, you're going to be here. So those are all the things that we have considered and it does take time, takes a long time. It's just that you're not going to hear about it until we get to the committee where they're coming, we're asking the committee to recommend it to the board and that's where we're at.
Anything else with that, Brett? Or is that Maria next?
Just an, I have a curiosity question because this is how my mind goes. With the personnel report, if this is approved, was, what was the conversation with the new principal at Kate Goodrich? Was she promised in, okay?
I would never get it from you.
I shouldn't say promised.
This is going to be recommended to the board because at that time we knew that that was a fact. Yeah, that's all.
Christie?
So I'm assuming that if members were right, at some point, the board has a lead teacher? If they're an administrator, they may say, do you?
They've got a coordinator that in the event that the principal's gone or on sick or whatever, that person's going to take over. They don't pick up on evaluations, they don't answer emails, they keep the building full while the principal's gone.
And so as an administrator, they, like, do you think they have a master, do you have an administration or can we use a lead teacher to help with how an administrator behaves?
They can't be.
Or give them or dig up more money or more?
If we gave them, if they earned their admin cert and we gave them more money, then they're going to be an administrator. Teachers can't evaluate teachers. Teachers need an admin cert to do that. So I think I hear what you're saying. So you take a teacher, they've got their administrative certification, we still call them a teacher, give them a little bit of a statement. It sounds like an administrator to me because they're going to be at a different level. They cannot, teachers don't evaluate teachers. Teachers have a tough time even, you know, trying to develop some teamwork with other teachers, you know?
But you have that principal doing that and then you have the lead teacher doing disciplinary things, stuff like that, that's a possibility?
So the teacher would do that, would kind of be in the AP role, would not be called an administrator?
Yeah, I think you said not in the past, but if someone was over there.
From a building perspective, I called Tricia Dieter up to the microphone.
Just to talk about the lead teacher, it's not really the most effective model because most of the decisions or what would have to happen, you're actually pulling that teacher away from children during the day. So when the discipline happens or you have So, when the discipline happens or you have to deal something, you're physically pulling that teacher out from twenty-two students that are then essentially not getting the class of instruction. So, that did happen at Pine River several years ago, but in today's model, the lead teacher position is just not.
Thank you, Tricia. Thanks, Tricia. Other questions or discussion points, Kristi?
Well, because I remember complaining.
Understood. Why we called Mr. Dieter up. Brett, do you also have a question?
John first.
John first, okay. John?
Yeah, I think I keep going back to the same point I made at the high school. Your principal's role is to be the staff development tool, the curriculum tool, or should I say, not to, curriculum leadership, staff development, climate and culture, you're the boss of the building. And when you're talking about three hundred and fifty students, where the middle school is operating at five something, and they are infinitely shorthanded in disciplinary issues, and you are talking about a, a culture where there is a lot of adverse family and living conditions that are being responded to every day, I just, you, I would have a difficult time telling the next principal, here are your academic and curricular goals, go achieve them, but you're also responsible for all disciplinary issues, all parent communications, all PTO interactions. It, it just has, to me, to do with a numbers game. If, if Tricia and Heather are busy, logically speaking, Glenda would have been three times as busy because there's no other people there, right? I mean, is that a false statement?
No, that's correct.
So, if I asked Tricia to take on two hundred more students, would that be a fair thing to ask for her to do? Because that would be the exact scenario, right? So, to me, it has more to do with, you know, why do things happen? Why do these cultural events in the, in the building that we've been witnessing, why does it happen? Is it because the principal was ineffective in her role? Or is it just too much on one person's plate as compared to others? And so, it's, mine is not an emotional decision, mine is a numbers game. And if we can say that it's feasible, it's doable, then we should be able to pick up those two hundred kids and send them over to Washington as long as there's enough seats, or send them over to Jefferson as long as there's enough seats, and it'll all go charmingly well. I just don't, that's where I, I don't believe that. I think we need to make some type of change if we wanna see the improvement that we also desperately talk about when we meet.
Thank you, John. Brett?
Could you, can I, could you, did you repeat the motion that you made?
It was identical to yours, except for Kate Goodrich.
Did you add that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which included the accountability piece.
Right, yeah.
So, the amended motion became the complete motion with Kate Goodrich substituting Merrill High School.
Correct.
I know we're kind of in a limbo phase with this return on investment being implemented. And this is just my personal perspective to the administration. If we could maybe add these, just before we even implement it, if we can maybe kind of just start to incorporate it in some of these, these things, a topic summary sheet like, here's what we're looking at. You know, here, we wanna add two associate principals. We understand it's a two hundred, let's say, twenty thousand dollar investment with benefits over the course of the year. Here's what we, here's what we wanna show you in a year. Here's the, here's what we, you know, the high school is, we can pick out different building or different high schools around, around the state that have two associate principals. Here's something similar at an elementary level that has an associate principal. Actually, let me back up. Is there another elementary school around us that has an associate principal?
There's not another elementary school this size around us with the poverty that we've got. And we, we kind of do, and I'm, I'm not gonna slight your point, it's, it's in here, this is a heavy board meeting full of data. The, I think what John amended that to when he's talking about the conditions with the return on investment, and we are getting into this now, but there's no better place to start because we're held to the five pillars that we, that we described in going green. Now, it's what we're gonna do with those pillars and how we're gonna measure this success so that the board, we bring it to the board and the board says, yep, we had a successful year. That's the part that we're gonna fill in, but we're gonna answer the scorecard, we're gonna answer to removing the spotlight on education, showing you the data from day to day, not day to day, we're not gonna need every day, but showing you throughout the year so that there's no surprises at the end. That's exactly the conditions that we're talking about with an academic return on investment. It's, it's the scorecard in getting those numbers up. We're still gonna have discussion as to what you wanna see at, below at or above grade level. We're still gonna see numbers of disciplinary referrals drop, but by how much? Those are the details that we're gonna have to work out. But it is the scorecard that I hold the administrative team responsible for, you guys hold me responsible for. That's my role here is to make sure that I'm coming back and showing you guys success.
And I think, and I guess this is against it even more personally, I, if we include that in some of our, some of these relevant kind of areas moving forward, we possibly can avoid some dialogue back and forth that, and meeting, and I, this last HR finance meeting, we just ran a little bit out of time, where I could've covered some of the questions that I had, so I apologize for kind of ducking off on these two tangents this evening, but laying out the same return on investment for every decision, even if we haven't necessarily a hundred percent implemented it and a hundred percent laid out the outline, tying that to it and laying that out for us to see every time, I think is, is necessary before we even get to maybe the point of, these are exactly what we mean by ROI.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, you'd like to think of something that's not subject to change or something that's not subject to getting rid of, can't even say property. I mean, you know, you can't. Everything is subject to change. Everything is, has to be under scrutiny and evaluation because it's the scorecard that has to start, start turning green. Who cares about the basketball hoop being broken or all red? If we're gonna fix that and not address our student achievement, you're absolutely right. So, that's the premise by which we're gonna have to move forward. Thank you, Tricia.
Anything else, Brett? Anyone else? Otherwise, I have a couple of points to, to add or clarify. We have task administration, specifically the superintendent with monitoring student needs and bringing this data to us. We've talked achievement instead of growth. We've asked how through community conversation are our strategic partnerships to retain, retain and attract staff? We've added tonight another pillar in wellness for student and staff. We've, we've talked about coming up with some, some training and a, a new accountability piece for the superintendent for the evaluation side called DAPs. Certainly goes without saying that we're looking at all of these topics and we are, are looking to make these things measurable, not only through the financial ROI, as we've talked about again this evening, and the smarter school spending models. And as Mr. Dasher alluded to earlier, my, my concern, as mentioned by fellow board people, was, was timing and some data. However, they spent a lot of time on this and we do need to continue to add the updates as we go through into the committee level and not all team or other notes. So, a, as we go forward, we've talked about continuing to share those at a committee and, and board level, just, to your point, Brett, we have extended the timeframe of some of our committee meetings, just to not have that happen, but I don't wanna digress on that. My, my concern with the timing is to other board members' points, if it does not happen now, the candidate pool would be a year or more out because at, at this point, at a semester, that's not reasonable next month or two months. Everyone will have been hired. And while we do have contracts where we can control that, I just want everyone to take all those items, as we've all talked about, these points for our, our students and staff in Merrill area public schools, keep that in mind, so. Anyone else have any discussion or questions on this particular motion? Otherwise, with that being said, I would ask Tammy to provide a roll call vote on this, this motion.
Scott Waller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kristy Stoller?
Aye.
Maria Veltin?
Aye.
Nikki Newman?
Nay.
Max Ashford?
Nay.
Trevor Blake?
Aye.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I had a four-three vote for a majority, for aye, three for nay. Motion carries with a four-three vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is contract days for the activities director and attached topic summary sheet from Brian Dasher and a recommended motion from the finance HR committee. Do we have a motion this evening on that topic? Maria?
I move to increase the contracted days of the activities director to two hundred forty.
Motion by Maria, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. Any questions or discussion on that motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty food service budget with an attached topic summary sheet from Brian Dasher with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend a motion to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty food service budget as presented.
Motion by Nubs, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Maria. Any discussion or questions on that motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Our next item is the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen final budget, budget revisions with the attached topic summary sheet from Brian Dasher with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I recommend a motion to approve the revised two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget as presented.
Motion by John, a second by Brett. Any discussion or questions for Brian Dasher? Anything you would like to add on that?
No.
No, I, I think it was, I, I think it was well presented, I just did not know if you had anything to add, so thank you, Brian.
We didn't have a chance to discuss the finance committees, that's why I turned off your system.
Understand and, and appreciate that. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the preliminary fiscal year twenty twenty budget, the attached topic summary sheet also by Brian Dasher and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I recommend a motion to approve the preliminary two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget as presented.
No, actually, you, you should be, no, no, I'm sorry.
You're out of order.
I'll second.
We have a motion by John, a second by Maria. Any discussion, questions or clarifying points by Mr. Dasher?
I, I can clarify.
Fair enough. Hearing nobody else, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is the approval of a lease agreement for the Merrill Adult Diploma Academy location with an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman. Many times, we hear that as the acronym of MATA. For clarification, do we have a motion this evening? And the recommended motion as stated for facilities. Maria?
I move to enter into a lease with the city of Merrill to rent space for MATA to hold classes as outlined in the lease agreement.
Motion by Maria and a second by Brett. Any questions or discussions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice call. The next item on our agenda is the approval of a Fab Lab plasma table room and attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion from the facilities committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
Facilities committee recommends a motion to construct a space to accommodate the plasma table purchased with the grant money obtained by the Fab Lab director.
So, Nubs has a motion, do we have a second? Second by Kristi. Thank you. Also, Maria. Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next topic on our agenda is the simplicity and server upgrades. We had a attached topic summary sheet from Professor Nasher and a recommended motion. I believe that was discussed at the CTP committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I move to approve the simplicity purchase from RMM and the server upgrade purchase from Dell.
Motion by Maria, do I have a second? Second by Nubs. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the modifications to the Merrill High School schedule for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty with an attached topic summary sheet from Mr. Murray. This is information only, does anyone have any questions or discussions or anything you'd like to elaborate on that, Dr. Sample or Mr. Murray? It's pretty self-explanatory, but sometimes we have.
We're extending the time before or after it would require more approval. This is information only and what the high school admin wants to do with their time between the two rounds. Make it more equitable.
Fair enough. I just wanted to clarify that for, as I stated and I mentioned earlier, information only. Our next item on our agenda is the approval of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty WIAA membership renewal of the topic summary sheet provided by the activities director, John Miller, with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? John?
I'll recommend a motion to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty WIAA membership renewal.
Motion by John, do we have a second? Second by Maria. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice call. Next item on our agenda this evening is the superintendent's compensation with an attached topic summary sheet from Brian Dasher. Says, we discuss at the finance HR committee level with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Brett?
I recommend a motion to place Dr. Sample on step B of the superintendent's salary schedule for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year and step D for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year.
Motion by Brett, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John, any discussion or questions on the particular motion discussion? John?
Just point of interest that the logic that we've used to place everyone on their schedule, whether a teacher, all the schedules, the same logic was used in this regard, so...
Thank you, I was trying to clarify or ask this, Treasurer and Chair of that Committee, so thank you for stating that. Any other questions or discussions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is changing of some meeting dates, the first one, July 17th, so July regular board meeting can move one day later to July 18th, 2019, and the September 25th, 2019 regular board meeting to actually one day prior, September 24th, 2019. There are stated in a packet a number of different opportunities in the district and some conflicts of scheduling, though we're trying to get some planning in order going forward with the recommended motion, do we have a motion this evening? Brett?
I recommend a motion to change the July 17th, change the July 17th, 2019 regular board meeting to July 18th, 2019, September 25th, 2019 regular board meeting to September 24th, 2019.
A motion by Brett, do we have a second to that motion? Christie? Any questions or discussion on that motion or topic? Linda?
I just won't be able to be after July 14th, or 18th, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any other questions, discussions, clarifying points on that motion, or... Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the 2020-2021 School Calendar and Adding on Days, Minutes for Potential Make-Up Days. This is informational only, and this has been discussed at the CTP Committee level as well, but thought to provide the information to the entire board, a lot of time was spent on this, and many community members had asked for some additional data as to what things would look like if we'd be adding minutes, and how could we prevent Mother Nature from doing her thing again, and not being perhaps better prepared, besides what perhaps voice lessons for Dr. Sample, although he did a wonderful job, but you know, yeah, that was so last year, right?
Yeah.
So if you'd like to touch on that, please, I'd appreciate that, Dr. Sample.
And the reason the attachment is called 1920 is because we were potentially looking at it for this coming school year, we just don't have the time right now, so we want to be very... Methodical, I guess, in moving forward, and we want community input, so we're going to keep, survey parents and students on, in September, bring that back to the October Committee Meeting, kind of look at it, is it going to be 10 minutes, 20 minutes, no change, do we want a week off in Thanksgiving, like this will be the first Thanksgiving that we're going to experience a week off because of the high attendance, or low attendance rates at the middle school and high school, so rather than beat them, we joined them and just said, okay, take the week off, that pushes us into June a little bit, so we're not going to have the winter we did this past year, I'm already saying that, weathermen say it all the time anyway, so they don't, they're not held accountable, but we want to look at what's best for our students and, and our, and our parents for the school days. We also have a number of instructional minutes to meet, and if you ever want to look at something that's just extremely fascinating, when you spend enough time with it, it is kind of fascinating, the worksheets that DPI puts out, so you can calculate a number of minutes of instruction, so we have to meet that obligation first and foremost, but we want parent input as to what that calendar is going to look like, and I think it's going to be a win-win all the way around.
Go ahead, John.
Is there, when you look at other districts, do any other districts target Memorial Day? I mean, we did the seniors out on Memorial Day now, and I don't know what that means in regards to 7:45 to 3:20, you know, but it would seem to me that then if you had five snow days, you're going to bump into June 1, which would be ideal. Rather than shooting for June 1 and getting to June 7, or 6, whatever, is it logical to shoot for that holiday and then throw some change at the end? Do other districts do it, and is it effective?
I don't know if they do it intentionally, but they certainly seem to do it by looking at their calendars, yes. We're all starting September 1 unless we want to go year-round, that's the only way around DPI's requirement and the Department of Tourism's pressure, so we start after September 1, and, and I think that some districts are targeting that. So yeah, in, in short, yes, the other thing that we're going to be looking at, or if you look at the 20 minutes, if you add 20 minutes to every school day right now, and it's a middle school and high school that have the, the highest number of required, the amount of minutes, elementary school, you know, met it, don't tell them, they probably met it two weeks ago, but we're not going to say, okay, elementary, you're off, middle school, high school's going, everybody stays together in, in all districts in this state, so if we add 20 minutes to every instructional day, we would have 11.7 days built into our calendar, but we don't want to build in 11.7, we would like to build in five or six. I think parents want to know when they're getting out of school, am I getting out of school in early as June, in June as I can, or not even going to school in June, but, you know, not give back the instructional days if we don't need them, or the snow days if we don't need them, instructional days if we don't need them, sorry. So we build in five days, that's our calendar every single year, if we do have that anomaly with that sixth day, we also are going to build in an MSI day towards the end of the year that we can count that as a student instruction day, so we want to stay as consistent as we can for our parents, and I think that's a great plan. Another thing that we didn't discuss at the committee is, is to try to stay, you know, we're better than them, but I, we may want to try to stay consistent with Los Angeles too, because we do have a number of parents that not only work, pick up kids and everything else, but we have a number of teachers and employees that live in that area, so if the spring breaks match up, then that's, that's kind of a bonus too, but that's, that's a little further down the priority list, so we'll have a number of factors to look at, and I'd love to not go to school in June, like most people would.
And that's all for the, not this coming school year, but that would be our target for 20 to 21?
Correct, we'd like to have that calendar developed after surveys, committee, board, developed by January, and a two-year calendar, so that we, and we're always going to meet every single year, so we're always a year and a half, two years ahead of the schedule.
And that matches the budget too, doesn't it?
Yes.
We can go to a two-year budget, two-year calendar.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? I guess I had also heard, within that survey, and Maria, you can correct me if I'm wrong, someone did mention, talked about the Thanksgiving holiday full week, but also spring break, there was some, you know, having that whole week there, there, there may be some opportunity to, to pull back some days or, or sometime, and look at the spacing for the wellness of students and educators based on where the breaks fall in.
And tie it to Good Friday and Easter.
And tie, tie that accordingly to some other observed holidays or other needed breaks throughout the calendar, so there, there may be some more measurable data provided, if I understood that correctly, so. Just another added point. Nubs?
Just a point of comment to that, that we tried the, the spring break a few years ago, and we got a lot of feedback that the parents didn't like it because they planned their vacations for that week with the kids, and we also heard some complaints from some of the teachers that they needed that break in between from the kids, that it was good for their mentality, or whatever you can...
You know, which I can understand.
Yeah, mental health.
Health and well-being.
That's why, you know, we did it for, for one year, and it didn't seem to be popular, so we went back to, so keep that in mind if we consider shortening spring break.
That's when we had a two-day, I think it was a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Right, yeah.
Good to know.
Any other discussion or clarifying points on this informational topic on our agenda tonight? All right. Thank you, Dr. Sample and everybody, for the discussion on that. The next item on our agenda this evening is a resolution for the Merrill High School Scholarship Program from Gerald and Charmaine Whitburn, providing a $250,000 gift with an attached resolution, hopefully everyone had the chance to review, and a recommended motion, do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I recommend a motion to approve the resolution accepting the generous gift from Gerald and Charmaine Whitburn that will fund annual scholarships for seniors valued at $250,000 in memory of Bree Whitburn.
Motion by Maria, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brett. Any questions or discussions on this motion or topic? Hearing...
It's incredible.
It is, it's wonderful.
They're a wonderful family, wonderful people, very generous.
Thank you for adding that. With that motion on, on the table here, all those in favor of it signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. We, we do, on the agenda next, kind of a tradition, we go through community conversation outcomes to make sure that we're keeping everything in the front of our mind, and while that is a very important task, as is the strategic planning outcomes and initiatives, we've gone through a lot of data this evening, but if you could summarize a few highlights on there for us, Dr. Sample, I'd appreciate that for a discussion only this evening.
Sure, with the soon-to-be-old format, we're not going to lose this, I'll still keep it attached, but we did continue to make progress and strategies, and, and thanks for our students when it comes to promoting life skills and internships, we will switch over to the new format, adding that fifth pillar to the district scorecard, I will still continue to utilize this form in something similar to what we do with community, the community conversation, I'll only change the format just a little bit, and the way that we enter that data, just a little bit, so we still will see a running list, but we're really going to see that this list is going to contribute to the five pillars on the district scorecard, and that's going to be attached to this as well, and so we will continue to do that, that's going to be my way of informing the board, these are the small strategies and measurables that we're using, and when we get to the big data points, that's going to throw out the spotlight on education and start talking about student achievement and behavior.
Thank you, Dr. Sample. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, I want to ask if anyone would like anything pulled this evening from our consent agenda? If not, I would be looking for a motion. John?
I motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through E, which include the second reading and approval of policies 9150, school visitors, the minutes of the May 15th, 2019, May 23rd, 2019, and June 5th, 2019 meetings, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling $3,266,936.78. Personnel report, which includes the hiring of Amy Stutz-Srym, Kate Goodrich Elementary School Principal, effective July 1, 2019, Jason Wadzinski, PRMS Math and Science Teacher, effective August 20th, 2019, Catherine Manning, Kate Goodrich Special Education Teacher, effective August 20th, 2019, Caitlin Lau, Kate Goodrich Special Education Teacher, effective August 20th, 2019, and Courtney Wadzinski, PRMS Special Education Teacher, effective 2020th, 2019. The transfers of Daniel Block to PRMS Special Education Teacher, effective August 27th, 2019, and Deborah Sprague to CO Accounts Payable Specialist, effective date to be determined. The resignations of Bryce Betford, PRMS Math and Science Teacher, effective May 31st, 2019, Leah Milbeck, Kate Goodrich Teacher, effective the end of the school year, 2018-19, Rhonda Begston, effective at the end of the 2018-2019 school year, and Olivia Crans, effective at the ends of 2018-2019 school year, and the retirement of Sue Vanegy, effective date to be determined, and donations totaling $2,274.59.
Motion by John, do we have a second? Second by Christie, all those in favor of the motion?
Can I ask a quick question?
Normally, we would pull that from the consent agenda to ask a question, correct?
Okay.
But we can ask a quick clarifying?
I guess I wasn't sure who to ask it to, because it's a personnel report question, would that be you, Dr. Samuel?
It would, it would be HR in lieu of HR.
My understanding is that there was a fourth grade teacher from Kate that had resigned, Sheila Clockstall, and I don't see her on the personnel report.
That did not get updated, that's going to have to go to the next one, you're right.
Okay.
Absolutely right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nubs?
I also have a question on the personnel, you know, the demographics, you know, make this sometimes switch people from building to building in different grades, but I thought I saw where we flipped fifth grade teachers between Maple Grove and Washington, is that correct? And why would we flip teachers between schools?
That's a better fit, we have strengths, and I, I tried to explain that in email, probably didn't do a very good job, or I was too vague about it, when it comes to leadership, strengthen content, strengthen math, strengthen both content, multi-grade versus single-grade, those types of things, so that's, that's some of the things we look at. What you'll see is Daniel Block is listed as a transfer on this personnel report because she went to a vacant position at the middle school, those other switches wouldn't be on here because, and, and it's one of those things, we want people to get attached to their building and the culture and the climate, and their, their colleagues there, but we're all MAPS employees, unless you've got a one-of-a-kind position like a German teacher or superintendent, you're assigned to that building, and so we try to make those moves as, as painless as possible and, and as smooth as the transition, so we're following that their strengths are going to be better there.
I understand having to move to where they needed and all that, I was just wondering if you would flip two people in the same grade.
Correct, yeah.
Well, that's okay.
Thank you, that's a good question.
And then I have to abstain from donations in the consent agenda.
Thank you for your donation, Nubs.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
You bet.
And I would need to abstain from the June 5th approval of minutes.
All right, we have the motion, all those in, in favor, other than the abstentions that were just mentioned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. And the abstentions were noted first, Tammy, the donations, et cetera. Thank you. As I had mentioned, our last meeting, our, our next item is the items for future meetings, and giving this some thought as how to go through this with maintaining the integrity and having a discussion at a board level, we all need to have added items, and, and we will continue asking for them here, we will add a fourth step, and we can work with this, but the fourth step that I'm proposing at this time, and we can have feedback from the board, is to have the item requested by the board member, and then at, at that time, of course, we would normally take that to committee and bring it back to the board, but what I would say at, at this point, when somebody at each item comes up, we will then ask for a majority of the board to support that, to want that to go through that priority list of going to a committee and then coming back here, because we are then giving work direction to Dr. Sample and the administrative team to do something, and I would like to make sure, and just instead of all of our ideas coming up, and why are they not being done promptly, that we're making sure that at least the majority of everybody here at, at the board level want to do that, and that's not to single out any particular ideas, it's to help provide guidance to the superintendent and the administrative staff, so bear with me as, as we try to add that here this evening, and, and look for an example of anyone who, who wants to raise their hand for an item for a future meeting.
I'll put myself out.
Well, I appreciate that. Well, I appreciate that, Maria. Nobody better. Go ahead.
It's odd. Just wondering if on future personnel reports, because we do have a new HR person, so it wouldn't be any different than what he wasn't doing before. So with regard to the point that Nubs made of teachers moving to different levels, either within the same building or a different building, say somebody goes from first grade to fourth grade, or somebody goes from whatever to Maple Grove, could we also have that captured in the personnel report so we can see the movement that's being made as opposed to just resignations, retirements, that sort of thing?
Building assignment, sure.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great, if everybody, a majority, would agree.
So we have a requested item for some future activity.
That would be the HR Committee Agenda item?
Yeah.
It would be heading there for the finance. It could be normally reviewed to start with at Finance, HR, but certainly could tie into the CTP Committee. With that recommended item for future meeting, all those in favor of that being added at the committee level signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Looking for ways to improve that, so I would just like to say, short of the raising of hands, we'll go with a voting, a voice vote at this time. So thank you, Maria, for being the guinea pig of trying this. Do you have other items for future meetings?
No, I usually do, Kevin, but I'm okay tonight.
I'd like to make sure Tammy has it noted, because Paul won't believe us. I'll be here all night. Oh, we were. Linda? Go ahead.
Maybe pick, no, some are, but not. But, and I think I already talked about it with you, but it would maybe be good for the rest of the board members to know it's about the looping that's going on at the middle school, where the teacher starts at the sixth grade, and then they follow the kids up through eighth, and then they come back and circle over again. So that'd probably be good information for the rest of the board as well.
Just an FYI from the middle school as to how they loop?
Yeah.
So they, future?
And I could probably go to the CTP.
Presentation to be vetted for looping at the middle school.
I just learned about it myself on an eighth grade field trip, so.
All right.
Information looped.
With that item being suggested or recommended, all those in favor of that going to the CTP Committee for further review, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, thank you. Do we have any other additional recommendations for items for future meetings? Sure, I'll put myself out there as well. One of the topics that I've talked about...
Not a very good, very trilly question.
Yeah, no. For our finance and HR, I've asked yourself and Brian Dasher to provide some baseline thought going forward on, we've talked about compensation plans. So my requested item for future meeting and to be brought to Finance, HR would be that of see where MAPS stands on the substitute teacher compensation plan. So with that being stated, that's the requested item. All those in favor of that going to Finance and HR signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you for that reminder. Anyone else have items for future meetings? We do have a couple unfinished items that are being researched, and while they are there, and we did not go through that process, they will continue to be reviewed and prioritized as work product and provided to those committees and to the board. We also have a continuing agenda item with the Board Decision Financial Impact Summary. We're wanting to keep out there the awareness of any impact that we have when we make decisions as a board. If we talk about something that we're removing or something that we're adding, that there are budget implications for that. So these are our great reminders. So we'll continue to update that, so we have that data. The next item here is just a reminder of our radio schedule. Normally, I would say tomorrow morning, Dr. Sample, and I will be on, on Blue J 730 radio station, but Dr. Sample has a prior commitment, so I will be on the radio at 8:15 tomorrow morning.
Kevin Blake Show.
I'd like to note at this point, I respectfully decline the opportunity, because being on the radio sounds terrifying.
I really, I really did try to have the opportunity for the promotion of all the summer things, and supporting the new initiatives in finance with, using our treasurer. I'm sure as we walk out of the meeting this evening, the Vice President will beg me for the opportunity, but I'll, we'll make do with what we have planned for myself to be on the radio, so. Future meetings to highlight, the Safety Committee meeting is coming up on Monday, July 1, 2019, at 12:30 PM in the boardroom, and Dale will then report that back with Dr. Sample to the Facilities Committee. The Finance, HR Committee meeting is Wednesday, July 3, 2019, at 4:30 PM in the boardroom. The CTP, or Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Services Committee meeting is slated for Wednesday, July 10, 2019, at 4:30 PM in the boardroom. The next regular board meeting, as adjusted this evening, will be Thursday, July 18, 2019, at 5:30 PM in the boardroom, and the calendar invites will be modified if they have not already been by Tammy. With that being said, we have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under Sections 19.85, Pren 1, Pren C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Pren F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data, specific person's preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific person, except where Pren B applies, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. The purpose of the closed session is to review the pre-expulsion history. Do we have that motion this evening?
So?
Motion by Maria, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Linda. We have that roll call, please, Tammy?
Brett Waller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Zellman?
Maya Volpe?
Aye.
Lundy Gignan?
Aye.
Matt Vasquez?
Aye.
Kevin Blake?
Aye. We will take a quick recess for five minutes to allow to clear and secure the room. Reminder to turn your microphones off.